Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment Susessory Agency, Callexico Financing Authority Planning Commission meeting. Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 6:43 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Ty Linda.
Here.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Calderon.
Here.
We have quorum.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible)
Blessed Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts. We pray that your will be done in our city. Give us the wisdom and passion necessary to leave a legacy and good foundation that will impact our future generations. Help us to always express ourselves with love and respect as we work together to solve problems, because together we are stronger. We ask this in the name of your beloved Son, Jesus Christ, who is the way, the truth, and the life. Amen.
Okay, please be seated. Close session announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. We met in closed session before the meeting, however, we did not finish closed session. As such, we'll reconvene at the end of meeting into closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We move on to approval of the agenda. I was going to request that item number 19 be moved up above item number 14, so it'd be the first item under discussion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Ty Linda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We are going now to public, nope, announcements. Do you have any announcements? No? Public comment? City Attorney.
Thank you. This is a time and place for the public to address City Council on items not appearing on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The City Clerk will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal slanderous remarks. The City Council is prohibited by law from taking action or discussing items not included on the agenda. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comments when we get to that item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will add that public comment is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. If additional time is required for public comment, they will be heard toward the end of the meeting after discussion on potential action items. So we will close public comment at 7:17 PM. Okay? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. I am going to call two people at a time. Please come to the microphone when I call your name. Jesús Solano and Victor Rocha.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councilmembers, city manager and staff, the public. This is just a point of information and a request. At this time, I am requesting a flagpole and at least a decent monument for our fallen officer, Agent Calderón. We at least owe him that, okay? Let's jump into the next. This is regarding some numbers, okay? My understanding is that there's about 580 properties there, and they pay roughly about maybe a little bit over less than $6,000, an average of $250 per, $60 per year. If you multiply that for 20 years, that gives you roughly about 4.3 million, maybe 4.5 million. My question is, where's the funding on that? Okay? Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Victor Rocha, live in Callexico. What I wanted to address to you is that the city of Callexico currently has many, many contracts. I urge you to put them out for bid, but I'd request for proposals. We ask, why is this contract being provided, say, for instance, your extra help? No one can show me a contract. No one can explain to me how is it that he acquired such a good contract. I think you should put it up for request for proposals, put it up for bid, and whoever gets it, put something in writing. The other thing is, I wanted to remind you, I think I've spoken to you as councilmembers, is that we, the city of Callexico has accounts receivables, doubtful accounts. According to your audit performed in 2024, the city of Callexico is owed $26 million. $10 million have to do with the redevelopment agency. I urge you to get a listing of every single one that owes you money and find out why hasn't it been collected, why it hasn't been paid for. Also, you have individual contracts that go, some of them go up to five years, that's for $5 million, for 50 years. You have outstanding contracts that your auditor has enumerated and told you there's deficiencies. It's considered doubtful accounts. If you were to wipe out all your doubtful accounts as the accounting principles require, the city will be broke. $26 million that no one has collected. You have a finance director, you have a city manager, that should be their main priorities, and they're not doing it. You're focusing on other things that I think you need to get a hold of your finances. If you just let it go, city will be closed soon. So I urge you again, take the necessary precautions to protect the city.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Carmen Estrada.
So let me say this. I'm gonna ask the people from the audience that, please refrain from clapping, only because this is only gonna prolong the meeting. So let's listen to what everybody has to say, but clapping will only make this meeting longer. So I appreciate that you wanna show your support, but let's also just keep the meeting flowing smoothly. Thank you.
Carmen Estrada and Casey Cásárez.
Soy Carmen Estrada, presidenta de la Liga de CPA de Soccer. Estamos aquí debido a que pues no se ha cumplido el sueño que hemos tenido. Es un campo de soccer que se aprobó, se han aprobado tres campos de soccer, los cuales no se ha llevado a cabo ninguno. Entonces, el último que se aprobó fue el Córdoba, que se dieron 270 y tantos mil dólares, el cual es, venimos por eso, verdad, para que se cumpla nuestro sueño de tener un campo de soccer. Porque la verdad, es lamentable como estamos nosotros viviendo. Aquí están todos los niños, ponganse de pie, todos los niños, los papás, que creo que no han volteado a vernos. Estamos muy mal en campos, los invito a que vayan a vernos. No es la primera vez que vengo. La última vez que venimos todos los niños fue la última vez que se aprobaron 276, 73 mil dólares que se fueron a los bomberos, pero ahorita hay.
Señora Estrada, disculpa, si va a hablar del parque Córdoba, se tiene que esperar al número 19, o es en general.
No, no estoy hablando campo Córdoba ahorita. Estoy hablando de las necesidades que tenemos nosotros de un campo. El campo Quintiandrade no tenemos un baño. Nos destruyeron un campo y nos siguen destruyendo cada momento. Estamos bien mal, no hay nadie que esté supervisando la obra. Nosotros ya lo arreglamos, sembramos, fertilizamos, pusimos espinco, nuestra organización. Y luego llegó otra vez la compañía quebrando banquetas y haciendo lo que le da la gana, y yo no veo una supervisión ahí que les estén diciendo, "A ver, cuando se va a terminar", nada, no hay nada. Entonces estamos tirando el dinero a la basura, y aquí los papás. Señora Estrada, esto, yo no soy la dueña de los campos, nosotros somos las que estamos dándole el tiempo a esos campos, y les damos gracias, porque la verdad, nos dieron el permiso, pero ya, estamos cansaditos, la verdad. El dinero, 270 y tantos mil dólares que se vayan a un campo de soccer. Volten a vernos, por favor, volten a vernos. Ya tenemos muchísimos años aquí al frente, y no se ha cumplido el sueño. Tengo 70, ya ni sé, 67 años. Yo empecé aquí a los 33, y es hora, que no tenemos un campo de soccer. Por favor, hágalo. No quiero que sean nuestras palabras. Gracias.
Okay, gracias. Madam Clerk.
Casey Cásárez en Juan Angulo. Juan Angulo en Jonathan Rangel. Jonathan Rangel.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Rangel. I'm with the Callexico Police Officer Association. I'm here to talk about the park. No, I'm just kidding. A different park. So, the Callexico Police Officer Association has decided to create an event for the community this November 1st. It's been a while since we've done anything to give back to the community. We are seeking everybody's, how do you say, blessing. We submitted our TUP today. Hopefully Mr. Coyne can get that a fast track, and instead of department heads, if you see it, you know, don't put it at the bottom of the stack, put it right on top. We want to get that approved as soon as possible, get our vendors in. The event will be called, you guys ready for this? Nightmare on Fifth Street. For those of you that are my age, you should know what I referred to. I tried doing the best that I could. I hope nobody from the studio is watching this, 'cause I'll be in trouble. So a few of the things that we noticed, we ran into a few obstacles, not only with the Health Department, you know, none of our members had experience creating an event in this size. We are looking to reserve Rockwood Plaza, create an event where all the youth that are here, which is a great set, I mean, it's a good thing that they're here today, we will be reaching out. So the main goal was to create an event where youth groups, clubs, parent booster clubs, and anything, any type of entity that gives back, gives back to the youth, would be able to generate funds back for their department or their organization, so that they could continue giving back to the youth. We ran into obstacles. A lot of these groups do not have a nonprofit status, and they do not have any of the permits required. Nonetheless, we're gonna move forward, and we're gonna continue building this event. Few of the things that we noticed is the restroom is not in, you know, appropriate condition or serviceable manner. So, you know, it would be awesome for us to continue, or any other type of organization that wants to create community events, to at least get that the restrooms are back on par. Trying to get porta-potties is not always the cleanest and safest way to, you know, for hygiene purposes, but nonetheless, we'll make sure that we have appropriate restrooms facilities for our residents and anybody else that's, you know, willing to come out So I noticed that the city does currently have an allocated amount of yard sales that a resident can request to get their fees waived. So, you know, out of all, going through all this, it just kinda dawned on me, hey, why not make it to where we get a few waived fees for a one-day business license for some of these nonprofit organizations? Or, for instance, any veterans that have honorably, have been honorably discharged from any of the different branches of service. With that in mind, again, I reach out to you guys, and hopefully you guys can publicize this. And November 1st, 5 to 9 PM, Rockwood Plaza, the CPOA will be bringing together a community event for you guys.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We received two public comments via email from David Saunders and Orlando Espino, and you have been given a copy. And that is all for general public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on over to the city's manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate being at my first regular meeting. Thank you very much for bringing me on board. I've been very busy the last seven weeks or so, getting to know all the issues here in Callexico. One of the things I wanted to talk about is understanding all the challenges and the priorities. I really think that in local government, we can't do it all, so I'm suggest, all at once, so I'm suggesting a priorities workshop occur in the next few weeks. I'd like to bring on ILG, Institute of Local Government, to help us do that. That's an organization that we, that we entered into an MOU with recently, and they will assist us for free to work on our priorities. So I've been meeting with the department heads the last several weeks, and we have those priorities ready to go for discussion, and I'll be reaching out to the mayor and city council to establish that date, probably in early October at this point, but we'll be, I'll be in touch very soon on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any commissioners' reports?
Dice que es para el número 19, o aparte? Nomás tiene uno para, para 19. Sí, es que si lo hago para usted, lo tengo que hacer para todos. Si es, si hay, si está el papelito, sí se lo doy.
You look for it? You look for it? There's only one? Solamente hay uno? Okay, adelante.
Gracias. Uh, mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham y ya saben viva en el diecinueve cero uno de la calle Filmo. Uh, la razón por la, tenemos tres minutos y le agradezco que me haya permitido hablar. La razón por la que estoy aquí es porque estamos, eh, aquí las personas representando a, como dicen tanta gente, pero aquí estamos, por los que no vinieron. Y lo que quiero que sepan es la razón, que es un político para mí. Un político es una persona que nos representa la comunidad, que no nada más está representando a cierto grupo de personas. Señor Calderón, yo ya oré mucho para que usted ganara y yo estoy esperando que usted haga lo correcto por toda una comunidad, no solamente por un grupo. Y señor Legaspi, disculpe que le diga, pero yo también, este, nosotros como vecinos, usted sabe muy bien que tenemos veinticuatro años siendo despojados y no se ha respetado la legalidad de ese parque.
No se puede hablar del parque.
No, no voy a, okay, perdón. No se ha respetado la legalidad. Y nada más les quiero decir que estamos esperando esto. Estamos esperando que nuestros representantes nos cumplan para la mayoría de la gente. Aquí hay promesas y nosotros como padres de familia también tenemos que tener un poco de empatía por los demás. En ese parque, bueno, tenemos que tener empatía, no podemos estarle diciendo, yo no le voy a decir a mi hija, ve, róbale a otra persona, quítale para que tú estés bien. No, nosotros tenemos que tener consciente, vivimos en una comunidad y tenemos que ser compartidos. Todos tenemos que compartir, lo que queremos es sacar la ciudad, pero no podemos estar quitándole las cosas a otra persona para nosotros obtenerlo nuestro. Por favor, oré mucho y pedí mucho y estamos esperando a ver qué respuesta nos dan. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. Now, do we have any commissioners' report? No, okay. Um, city council comments and reports of meeting attended, Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recently, I've been attending the Heber Park expansion with the city manager Benjamin Martinez and public works director Jesus Villegas and some stakeholders. Um, we are continuing with our weekly meetings, or bi-weekly meetings, uh, in order to make this a good transition and to complete the project that's been long overdue. Uh, I attended the nine eleven mass, uh, here at, uh, in Collexico in memory of our fallen heroes, uh, first responders, our first responders hosted by the Knights of Columbus here at our Catholic church in Collexico. Uh, council member Adiana Marcus and I met with fire chief Contreras on what he's doing and ways to increase revenues through public services. Very impressive work there, uh, chief, for doing an outstanding job. Can't wait for the outcome. Council member Adiana Marcus and I attended the El Grito event at Cramet Park hosted by the Collexico Rotary Club that brought lots of entertainments and food to those who attended. Uh, I attended the Police Commissioners Ad Hoc Committee, uh, with numerous stakeholders regarding future up and coming events. Lots of exciting events that are coming up, uh, such as graffiti cleanup and a national night out. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Council member Thailand.
Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for all coming out. It's great to see a full house, um, regardless of the situation, especially the child advocates. So it's great to see all the children here. Um, with that said, um, I've been working with, uh, the mayor um, and dealing with our senators. We had a meeting this week for the New River and, um, thank you so much for hopping on to represent the city of Collexico and those fifty million dollars that we'd like to get some to clean up the New River Mayor. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow with our assemblymen and, um, one of the things that we're all working on as a council in different ways is the Heber Park project. We don't wanna lose that and, um, we have some things that the mayor and I have been working on and, um, dealing with the actual department of Parks and Rec and seeing what, what fruits fall from over there. So hopefully we can report back good things, um, in the near future. Um, with that said, I wanna take the opportunity to use this time to not only, um, thank everyone again for coming out, um, in regards to the Córdoba Park project. I was out, um, walking and wanting to hear from the community immediately impacted, um, by the project to see what their thoughts were and the history of it. I don't, the, the goal here is not to demolish anything as people have been stating. Um, at least my goal is to really understand all this history that we never got from staff, even though we were promised information and, well, it's coming now, we'll, we'll review it. But, um, with that said, I, my goal is to really understand what the community wants at large and immediately impacted. Um, so hopefully tonight we can have, you know, respect, a respectful conversation and discussion on this item. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Marcus.
Good afternoon. Um, since our last meeting, uh, I have been able to attend, uh, the Heber Park meeting, bi-weekly meeting, uh, with the city, uh, manager, uh, Protem Legaspi and stakeholders. Uh, we're really trying to push this project through, making sure that, um, it's gonna be something that we're not losing, cause I know that we're coming very close to a deadline. I was also able to, uh, come in and observe the Economic Development Finance Commission. Uh, I also had the opportunity to meet with the fire department, with the chief, uh, with, uh, Protem Legaspi. Kudos to all the work and thank you for all the work that you're putting into, um, developing that department. I appreciate it. Uh, just a few months ago, we were all fearful of losing our ambulance service and, uh, I think that you're on the right track to making sure that that doesn't happen to our citizens, cause it's a very important special, especially since we don't have a hospital and because a lot of our senior citizens are dependent on that. Um, I was able to also meet with the chair of the Community Service Commission and speak about some of the projects that the commission is working on. And also, meeting with a lot of the members of the community in regards to Córdoba Park. Uh, both the people that, um, are near the neighborhood and would like to see a change in it and also for the people that want to, um, open up a park and play. It, it is a very difficult, uh, you know, decision for all of us, because we wanna make sure that we are being transparent, that we're weighing everybody's input and hopefully we'll get a resolution very, very soon. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Council member Calderón.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Um, I also attended a nine eleven ceremony at our Lady of Guadalupe. It was good to see all our, uh, first responders there and, uh, after that we had, um, some good tamales that were offered by the Knights of Columbus. Um, also, I had a meeting with, uh, some of, uh, our staff and also with the county officials regarding or addressing the truck traffic through Coal Road. That's something we're working on, we're trying to eliminate the semi-trucks going through Coal Road and hopefully, and within time, we'll be able to take care of that problem. And also this morning, I also met with, um, Escobar, Jesús Escobar, the supervisor from the county, um, some public work, uh, from, uh, the county, our city ma, I mean, city manager and our published direct, uh, director, also to, to address the Anza Bridge problem. This bridge has been closed for some time now and finally, um, we have some ideas as how we can go in and obtain some, some funds so we can, um, get that, uh, bridge open again. And Mr. Villegas is on top of it and hopefully, uh, you can see some, uh, movement going on in that bridge. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, council member Calderón. I'm only gonna speak to, um, one, um, meeting that is very important for our city and our county. Um, for those of you that weren't aware, at the last elections, there was Proposition Four that was passed. Um, it's for bond to, to get, uh, billions of dollars for, um, things to do with air quality and pollution, with the environment. So out of that, forty-six million dollars were allocated to cross border rivers. Just so you know, there's only two in California and those are the Tijuana River and the New River. And the New River, um, crosses our city and it, uh, all the way up into the Salt and Sea. And for those of you that don't know, it's one of the most severely polluted, polluted rivers in the country. So, um, we've already, uh, passed council and administration and along with the state, uh, past assembly members. They, um, already, uh, did a big infrastructure over there. For those of you that don't know, that's already, um, working on cleaning up the river so that by the time it gets to the Salt and Sea, the water is not as polluted. But, um, there are certain things that still need to get done. So I just want you to know that we're gonna fight for, for our share of that funding um, and we're, we're gonna start a delegation with the, um, our county supervisor and, uh, IID director, um, and other people and state reps and we're going to go fight for, uh, for that funding. So, um, just wanna let you know, that's all, I wanted to comment. So now we move over to the consent agenda. Do we have any comment on consent?
No, we don't.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve consent?
So.
Do you have second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Norikumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Council member Thailand.
Yes.
Council member Marcus.
Yes.
Council member Calderón.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now we get on to good stuff. So item nineteen, we're gonna move it up. Um, authorize the city manager to proceed with an RFP for a conceptual park design to provide conceptual plans and cost estimate for the changes to Córdoba Park as per the workshop held on June tenth, twenty twenty-five. So, um, I'm gonna open up that presentation a little bit and then I'll, I'll hand it over to staff. So just so you know, um, I requested this item to be on the agenda because it's been a, it's been a, an issue for many, many years and, um, it's, it's been causing a lot of division amongst our communities. So, um, I, I, I made the proposal to have this discussion appear, um, with the council and, and, uh, and the members of the community because we wanna listen to what you have to say. And. Okay, and then, um, uh, do you wanna do it now or? Okay, um, city attorney, uh, Mayor Protem Legaspi wants to know. Go ahead.
Attorney Campos, is this a conflict of interest for me to attend for discussion and potential action items for number nineteen?
Correct, uh, yeah, there, there are rules under conflict of interest rules, specifically the Fair, Fair, uh, Fair Political Practice Commission provides that, um, there are certain presumptions that are built into when an official has real property in proximity to a decision that will impact it. The rules provide that if you live further than a thousand feet, the presumption is that there's no conflict. If you live within five hundred to a thousand, it's a gray area. Doesn't say, it can go either way. And the rules also say if you live within five hundred feet, there's a presumption that there's a conflict. You could overcome the presumption, but you need clear, um, and convincing evidence to, to, um, rebut the presumption. The idea being here that if you own property that's close to the item, then that's why it's a presumption. And the impact, um, can be positive or negative. So the impact on somebody's residence doesn't have to be a positive impact, it can be also be a negative. The law does make that distinction.
So is your advice for me to abstain?
Our recommendation, yeah, our recommendation in these cases is always to abstain. But like I said, it's a, it's a rebuttal presumption.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. So for the record, uh, Mayor Protem Legaspi will be recusing himself on item nineteen. Okay, so, um, basically, uh, we have this item on the agenda um, so that the council can, um, uh, have a discussion, listen from staff, listen from you, um, because we want to bring a fair solution. Um, and, uh, so from there, I'll, I'll leave it to staff. Um, I don't know, uh, Director Villegas or, um, Director Coyne, if any of you wanna say something before we open it up for, for comment. Or the city ma, I should have asked you, city manager, sorry.
Thank you, mayor. I think, I think we'd like to also listen to the public comment, um, and, and then we can provide, uh, comments and information after that. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna open, uh, the comment on item nineteen. Madam Clerk.
Jesús Solano and Liliana Cañez.
Madam Chair, council members, staff, city manager. I believe, uh, what this council did, uh, about a month and a half ago was their election of duty. Because you accepted shutting down the survey. This council and the previous administration excluded the rest of Collexico. We need to understand Adrian Córdoba is not a gator, is not a closed park. If this council and administration wants to run it that way, so be it, okay? But then we're claiming our measure H and our crowdfunding back. Now, you are very well informed and aware that it's impossible to flood this chamber. You excluded the rest of the community. You excluded the rest of the community by doing that. Now, it was brought up at the workshop, that, that was fifty residents. I disbelieve that that was fifty, was, were they counting staff and the commissioners also? Because as far as I know, I gave you a copy right there on the checkings. Only twenty-five people voted, twenty-five people voted. Where's the other fifty? And on top of that, it was only five of them that requested the baseball diamonds to be removed. If we go that route, we're talking about five hundred and eighty properties there. If we go by percentage, it's one percent or less than one percent. So that's incorrect, that's misleading the, uh, community, misinforming and misleading the community. Now, this council should be concentrating on adding the other amenities that's supposed to be there, like they stated a while ago. I believe that this city has collected four point three, four point five million dollars. Where's the money? Okay? How has it been used? Where, what's the actual balance? Not the balance of twenty-three, twenty-four or twenty-four, twenty-five, okay? It's one point four, but right now the balance for Córdoba is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. For phase one, Collexico only utilized a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the CFD, but it's very specific on the CFDs for maintenance and for the infrastructure. That's how come previous administration only utilized about, uh, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The lightings for that part there, for the baseball field, the city didn't have to pay for it. You were already paying for, not this council, but the previous council was already paying for a engineer, city manager slash engineer, okay? He did it on city time. And then on top of that, IID came over and donated about two thou, two hundred thousand dollars of landscaping, laser leveling the area. So we're talking probably roughly like pretty close to one point five million dollars. So this council's thinking on demolishing, uh, one, uh, one point five million dollars?
Thank you, sir.
You tell me when. Uh, good morning or good evening, mayor, city council members and community members. My name is Liliana Córdoba Cañez and I am here tonight to speak, to speak in strong support of the proposal regarding Córdoba Park. I'm here with my mother, Lourdes Córdoba, and my daughter Adrian, named after Adrian Córdoba. This park carries deep personal meaning for me and my family as it is named in honor of my brother and only sibling, Adrian Córdoba, who was killed in the line of duty in two thousand and seven at just twenty-six years old. Adrian dedicated his life not only to service through law enforcement and the Marine Corps, but also to guiding at-risk youth in our community. He would often take the time to mentor them, showing them drills he had learned in the Marines, instilling in them discipline, hope and a belief in themselves as Collexico police explorers. To this day, uh, many of those young people were later my own students here in Collexico. To this day, I still hear from.
To this day, I still hear from them about the lasting impact my brother had on their lives. Cordova Park, named in his memory, represents that same spirit of service, mentorship, and opportunity. I understand from the recent public workshop and from this agenda item that residents are voicing concerns about the number of baseball and softball fields. What I hear in their concerns is not opposition to the park itself, but a desire for balance, fairness, and thoughtful planning so that Cordova Park, the only community park in Callexico, truly serves the needs of the entire neighborhood. The mayor's recommendation to authorize a request for proposals for conceptual plans and cost estimates is a responsible step forward. It shows that the city is listening, that they are willing to study options, and that they want to ensure that the park reflects the vision of the community that it serves. This is what my brother stood for, listening to others, guiding them, and working to create a better future. I believe that moving forward with this proposal honors both his legacy and the voices of the residents. Cordova Park should remain a place of unity, recreation, and growth, but not division. I respectfully ask that you support this agenda item and allow the process of developing conceptual plans to proceed. It is not just about the fields or facilities, it is about ensuring this park, in Adrian's name, continues to uplift, inspire, and serve the people of Callexico. Thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am.
That was very well said. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you for being gracious at this evening, but thanks to the Victoria Villas community that's here for their voice, for their vision, and for the unity that we have come to know to bring more clarity to this issue, okay? So the issue at hand is creating a community park, not, not a baseball sports complex. Again, let me repeat it, not a baseball sports complex. I believe that Callexico, I was born and raised here, it needs diversity. It needs a variety of sports in this park. It needs to have equity. We need to be fair, we need to be just. I hope that we can come to a conclusion where we could do the righteous thing for our future generation. It's not for us, it's for those kids that are not even born yet, because what we do today will have an impact ten, twenty, thirty years from now. We need a multi-sport place. We urgently need a soccer field. They do not have a soccer field. I see three teams playing at the same time, maybe little kids, middle-aged, and then adults. The grass is wasted away. It is not a professional soccer field. It breaks my heart to see the need and to hear the need. My heart just broke. I have a passion for children. I'm a retired teacher, and I have a zeal for what I do and for our future generation. So I hope this really does get resolved because it's been five, ten, fifteen, twenty years now. And again, it's for our future generation here at Callexico, where we can make an impact, we can make a difference, where we can say, "Ay, look at Callexico, look at their park, look at what they've done over there." Just like when we see El Centro and we see their swimming pool, when we see the dog park in Imperial, it's like, wow, look at them. It's happening, let's make it happen here. If we could start at one side, then maybe we could start on the east side, and everyone could have something like that, a vision, a dream, where it becomes a reality. I think it's so important that we take that into consideration, and maybe not removing the two fields, because I said, I just heard that they cannot be demolished. Well, maybe be creative and see what else you could do with those two extra baseball fields. I believe we have a lot of creativity and knowledge in this place, so let's go ahead and use it. That's what we were meant to do. And I would love to be part of the future changes to Cordova Park, or any of these people that are willing to sit with you guys and be part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vengo a dar mi opinión respecto al proyecto que hay para el Parque de Córdoba de construir más canchas, en específico canchas para béisbol. Aplaudo la idea de construir más centros deportivos para los jóvenes. Magnífico. Pero lo que sí debemos de ver, y es mi idea, de que se busque el lugar adecuado para esas canchas. Yo vivo desde hace diecisiete años muy cerca del Parque de Córdoba. Diario, sábados y domingos incluso, yo voy al parque a caminar, a correr, a trotar. El parque le hacen falta muchos detalles, le faltan áreas verdes, le faltan árboles. Ahora, si la idea es que se vayan a construir canchas de béisbol, por su naturaleza, una cancha de béisbol ocupa mucho espacio, y ahí el área no es tan grande. Ahora bien, para los que vivimos en ese área, eso ocasionaría incomodidades, porque un evento de béisbol lleva mucha gente, muchos automóviles, y eso es una incomodidad para los que vivimos ahí. Sé que un parque es público, pero también deben de ver que los que ya vivimos ahí, pues, nos van a quitar parte de una tranquilidad, porque como les digo, aumentaría muchísimo el flujo de gentes ahí, y que ello ocasiona para los que vamos ahí a correr, pues, ya me ha tocado. Si ahorita que no hay tanta gente, ya he recibido pelotazos porque juegan fútbol ahí. Ya me han tocado pelotazos. Lo bueno es que no duelen tanto la pelota de fútbol, pero sí de béisbol, esa sí duele, eh? Entonces...
Gracias.
Mi idea se las expongo, y están ustedes que tomen la mejor decisión. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Yolanda Cunningham and Julia Benitez.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham.
Puedo acercarme a el micrófono, por favor.
Sí, claro que sí. La razón por la que estamos aquí, pues ya saben. Y lo que quiero comentar respecto al Parque de Córdoba es que la ciudad nunca siguió los requerimientos de CICUAN, que se deben utilizar para la aprobación de cualquier proceso. Nunca, nunca se llevaron a cabo esos requerimientos. Y nosotros tenemos toda la documentación, tenemos más de, tenemos más del dos mil diecisiete estamos investigando esto. Y la ciudad tiene esa información, que le entregamos una carpeta al señor Daniels. Allí está toda la información. Hemos hecho un grupo de residentes, hemos investigado por mucho tiempo esto, porque son años y años y años de estar solicitándole a los concilios. Gracias a Dios, ahorita vemos una luz en el túnel finalmente. Otra de las cosas, la ciudad nunca nos notificó a todos los afectados del fraccionamiento. Cuando construyeron las tres canchas de béisbol, las hicieron cuando estábamos en pandemia. Ellos están, las personas están mal informando a la gente y diciendo que nunca venimos. Sí, sí venimos personas. Yo tuve una reunión con el señor Deo, y el señor Deo prometió otra cosa. Y también quiero que sepan que nosotros tuvimos también que pelearnos, o sea, porque tenemos que estar viniendo a pelear a la ciudad para estarles pidiendo lo que las personas están pagando con sus impuestos. Si nosotros pagamos, debemos obtener por lo que pagamos. Además, tenemos trescientas cincuenta firmas, y viene una persona aquí, comentó que estas firmas no eran firmas genuinas, no eran firmas. Yo los invito a cada uno de ustedes para que al azar agarren estas firmas y llamen a las personas. Alguien me dijo, ustedes están aquí para representar a las personas que no vienen aquí. Ustedes están para hacer lo correcto, lo legal sobre todo, y lo que es justo. Aquí nadie anduvo por todos lados fuera de esa, de esa, de esa área para colectar firmas, porque no lo necesitamos hacer, porque si ustedes tocan puertas, como lo hemos hecho nosotros, se van a dar cuenta que la gente quiere un parque comunitario nada más y que está desesperada. Desesperada porque ustedes tomen la decisión y resuelvan esto de una manera legal y de una manera justa para los residentes y para todo Callexico, por ende, porque ese parque lo usa todo Callexico. Los invito a que me acompañen un día, y ustedes vayan y hablen con la gente ahí para que se den cuenta. Así que, por favor, les pido de la manera más respetuosa que remuevan esas dos canchas, porque ese campo, esa tierra que está allí, la necesitamos para otros, para otras cosas. Aquí no se va a desperdiciar nada. Muchas gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. La razón por la que estoy aquí es por la misma que han estado haciendo las otras personas. Yo soy, estoy pegada al, mi casa está pegada al parque, entonces, este, sí me preocupa que amontonen todo, este, cerca de mi casa, tan pegado a mi casa. Sí quisiera que, pues, renovaran esas, esas dos canchas que están de más, este, hicieran, queremos un parque comunitario, como al principio, este, pues era el plan, y pues que se reubiquen o se rediseñen. Este, cuando hicieron, empezaron a hacer eso, esas canchas, dije yo, bueno, mis hijos por fin van a poder jugar básquet, este, pues ya crecieron, este, pasaron los años y pues no, no vi eso. Entonces, sí quisiera que tomaran una buena decisión acerca de, de el rediseño de las canchas que están de más. Gracias.
Thank you, ma'am.
Claudia Martínez and Mónica Valdivia.
Buenas tardes, yo soy vecina del Parque de Córdoba, y estoy aquí para pedir que se vote a favor del rediseño del parque. El parque fue creado para servir a todo el vecindario y debe de seguir siendo un lugar donde las personas de todas las edades e intereses pueden disfrutar de diferentes actividades. En este momento, los campos solo benefician a un grupo. El removerlos, yo creo que abriría, perdón, abriría mayor espacio para variedad de deportes, recreación, y actividades, haciendo que el parque sea verdaderamente inclusivo. El CFD se estableció con la promesa de que este parque se completaría para la comunidad y no para un solo interés. También recordar que la misión principal del Consejo de la Ciudad es, como lo establece en su sitio oficial, es proteger la salud, seguridad, bienestar de los residentes, mantener y promover y mejorar la calidad de vida. Asegurar este parque para que sirva a toda la comunidad encaja directamente en esa misión. Hoy les pido encarecidamente que tomen la decisión correcta y que se honre la promesa que se hizo a través del CFD, que respete la inversión de los residentes que se ha hecho y que se seguirá haciendo por varios años más, que se garantice que este parque sea un lugar para todos, para las familias, atletas, niños, adultos mayores, por igual. Perdón. No se pide nada extraordinario, solamente se pide lo justo, y que se tenga en cuenta las afectaciones también a los vecinos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, ma'am.
Buenas noches, miembros del concilio. Mi nombre es Mónica Valdivia, y vengo aquí a hablar de nuevo sobre el Parque de Córdoba. Soy residente desde hace veinticinco, veintiséis años. Yo he iniciado desde Gecola, señora Joly, desde hace mucho esta pelea. Enecía un principio, vecinos van, vecinos vienen, muchos nos quedamos, también con la ilusión de ver ese parque que se nos prometió, y no solo se nos prometió, se nos cobró, y se nos sigue cobrando año tras año. No queremos tres canchas de béisbol, queremos algo que sea para todos, inclusivo, para todo tipo de deportes. ¿Por qué tres? ¿Por qué se le tiene que dar preferencia a un deporte cuando hay otros niños que no lo practican? Ya se lo hemos pedido, se lo hemos pedido en reuniones, aquí en el concilio. City managers van y vienen, prometen, y luego cambian. El señor Calderón ha estado desde hace mucho tiempo también en el concilio cuando ha sucedido las cosas, y siempre dice que va a revisarlo, va a verlo, cambia de opinión. Están aquí porque el pueblo los votó, y así como los votamos, también podemos pedir que los remuevan por no escuchar nuestra voz. Pagamos por ese parque, somos quinientas y feria de familias que pagamos año tras año. Yo no digo que se les quite a los niños el derecho de usar el parque que nosotros pagamos. No sé qué por ciento de los que van y juegan y usan ese parque, vivan ahí realmente. También sería bueno verlo. Mi casa está a la esquina, y siempre hay carros, hay personas con perros que llegan de otros lugares de Callexico. No está mal, pero por favor, respétenos como residentes que llevamos más de veintitantos años pagando por tranquilidad. No creo que sea justo que hayan construido eso sin nuestra autorización. Es un CFD que pagamos. Entonces, por favor, hagan lo correcto, concilio. Piensen en todos, no solamente busquen el interés de una sola agrupación. Somos más las familias. Y esas firmas, yo, yo, como, a mí no me la tuvieron que pedir, yo busqué dónde firmar, porque no es la primera vez que lo hago. Tengo años presentándome, hablando, pidiendo. Mis hijos no pudieron disfrutar el parque, mis hijos ya están grandes, y ahora tampoco mis nietos, porque sigue el problema. La ciudad usa nuestros fondos en otras cosas, que es la verdad. Yo compré mi casa en dos mil cuatro, el parque no anunció cómo hasta el dos mil doce le echaron un saquetito. Por favor, hagan lo correcto esta vez.
Thank you, ma'am.
Romel Sandoval and Carolina Campos.
Buenas tardes, buen evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Romel Sandoval. I live near Adrian Cordova Park, and I want to express my support for the motion to remove the two baseballs fields. These fields were placed in the middle of a neighborhood without enough parking or infrastructure, and that's created a burden for the people who live here. Expanding more baseball fields will turn this into a baseball complex that is not what this community needs. What we do need is variety, areas for families, children, seniors, and everyday residents to enjoy, walking trails, shaded spaces, playgrounds, open grass, maybe even fitness areas, something for everyone, not just for one sport. I urge you to do the right thing for this community, please remove the two fields and give Adrian Cordova Park a future and truly serves all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Buenas noches. Es para lo mismo del Parque de Córdoba, este, ocupamos otro tipo de canchas también, son demasiadas, tres para lo mismo. También otra cosa, este, lo que también ha servido ese parque, lo que se les ha También otra cosa, desde lo que también ha servido ese parque, lo que es el estacionamiento es para que la gente vaya y se drogue. No hay, no van patrullas a dar rondines. Yo creo que he visto si acaso una a la semana, si no es que ninguna, entonces ocupamos que haga más seguridad ahí. Y pues queremos otro tipo de canchas también y para que vayan, no estamos en contra del deporte, claro que no, me encanta el deporte, pero hay que ser parejos teniendo otro tipo de deportes. Gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Carter Santa en María Silva.
Muy buenas noches. Tengo, en el 2005 adquirimos nuestra casa allí en Victorias y así que tengo 20 años pagando taxis. Tengo 20 años viendo el pedazo de tierra que donó Victorias, la empresa de Victorias que donó para la ciudad y pues he visto pura tierra. Y donpes llevan tierra y luego vuelven a meter tierra y luego la sacan y así están. Camino ahí alrededor y cerca de donde están los baños del estacionamiento huele muy feo a que la gente, la gente vaga pues va ahí, hace sus necesidades y todo. Pues por estos 20 años que yo tengo de pagando taxis, todo es mi derecho igual que toda mi comunidad, pues venimos a exigir que se remuevan dos canchas de béisbol, ocupan mucho lugar y en los planos originales solo había para una cancha y había más diversidad. Mi esposo trabajó en esa compañía entonces a mí me consta que todo así estaba, no estaba así como lo están diseñando ahorita. Y por esa razón que también tengo 20 años pagando taxis y que es mi derecho también por favor le suplicamos que por favor aprueben el punto número 19 sobre rediseño del parque. Mis hijos nunca han podido disfrutar de este parque y teniendo 20 años pagando esos taxis, pero no obstante tengo que seguir 20 años más pagando por estar viendo la tierra, mi casa llena de tierra y no se me hace justo. Todos los que estamos aquí pues necesitamos explicaciones dónde está lo que nos han retenido a nosotros, por qué no se ha invertido para lo que es. Y vamos a seguir pagando porque pues somos personas de bien la verdad. Muchas gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Buenas noches miembros del concilio y personas presentes. María Silva es 1907, Field Avenue. También mi casa está cerquita del parque, igual lo que la persona que acaba de pasar veo tierra. Entonces ya es la tercera vez que me toca participar solicitando que se modifique y que se apegue al plano original. Yo estoy ahorita solicitando que se quiten dos canchas de béisbol, ¿por qué? Porque en el plano original se estaba, había canchas de básquetbol, de fútbol, soccer y de tenis. Entonces yo estoy solicitando también que se renueve o se rediseñe el parque, que es el punto 19. Además considero que a la vez esas tres canchas de béisbol parece un parque privado y lo que nosotros queremos que sea un parque comunitario, que haya variedad de deportes y no nada más que se haga una liga de béisbol y que participen unos cuantos número de personas. Entonces queremos que haya más libertad, que no parezca, parecen jaulas. Y ahí aprovechan también las personas que no tienen hogar o que pan y se drogan para esconderse incluso en los baños. Si no estuviera así con tanta, tanto cerco y si ya estuviera terminado ahí habríamos más personas que pudiéramos aprovechar el parque. Sin embargo pues no se puede ahorita, no se puede porque falta que terminen ahí. Gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Sara Anguiano en Víctor Anguiano.
Buenas noches, yo soy Sarangüano, vivo en el 1417 Hayes a un costado del parque y vengo para pedir que se remueven esas dos canchas de béisbol y aprueben la propuesta 19 para que se pueda redificar el Parque Córdoba como originalmente se había planeado, que es de mucho más este ayuda para toda la comunidad para poderlo aprovechar mejor nosotros los que vivimos ahí. Muchas gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Bueno más repetir lo mismo que están repitiendo cada uno de los que están presentes. Este pues exigí la propuesta y que le den seguimiento ustedes como que nos representan a nosotros, ¿no? Y que tienen los fondos que en un momento dado nosotros salieron de nuestro bolsillo para con ustedes. Y que pues le den seguimiento y verdaderamente pues nos hagan caso porque estoy mirando que pues juntas y juntas y siguen lo mismo y pan con lo mismo. Gracias, eso es todo.
Thank you sir.
Víctor Rocha en Jorge García.
Again, my name is Victor Rocha. I just wanna support item number 19, I urge you to vote yes on it, let's redesign it. But I'm gonna give you also a little bit of a, instead of removing them, relocate them. Use what you already have, like for instance Nosotros Park which is was something very dear to my heart. It's completely abandoned, worn out, it's almost 30 years or more than 30 years. You can relocate those existing ones you have, that you have a nexus in Córdoba and put them, put one in Rodriguez Park or Legion Field and the other one, there's also a water plant that is even older than the one that we currently have. But let me give you a fact, the fact this year, no one used them. And we still had a recreation program going on with no impact. So you don't need three baseball fields there, just relocate them. And you will save money by not investing on the other parts. It will be just the cost of relocating and I think your city staff can do that. And the ID most happily will remove those lighting fields at no cost and put them somewhere else. So I give you solutions that not just talk. People in the community out there, Rodiles Bravo subdivision was promised things. And the city, our city council, previous city council members did an injustice. They built something that they didn't want without even their notice or consent. You need to have taxation but you also need to have representation. You're required by secret guidelines to send them notice and the city failed to do that. Just the city and city departments failed to do that, which is the planning, engineering, didn't follow with the secret guidelines require sending notifications. So I again, I urge you to relocate them to other existing parks that are falling apart. So you've had a lot of volunteers at Rodriguez Park and it's, go out there, go and see it. Try to use the restrooms, try to use the facilities. It's, the fences are all falling apart too.
Thank you sir.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Jorge García, vivo enfrente del parque también. Y estoy a favor de que se relocalicen dos canchas, no veo necesidad de desperdiciar un recurso que ya se utilizó, que ya se instaló, pero tampoco veo justo que en una zona residencial se desarrolle un complejo deportivo. Este y sobre todo un complejo deportivo dedicado a una sola actividad. Hay necesidad de, de más, de abrir espacios para, para los jóvenes de la ciudad definitivamente. Yo tengo tres hijos que juegan básquetbol, tenemos 14 años en la casa y nunca han podido jugar ahí. Este sí han jugado andando en la bicicleta etcétera, pero en realidad no han desarrollado sus actividades en el parque. Otra cosa que veo es de que hace falta más vigilancia en la zona, mejor mantenimiento. Este y veo que se está emprendiendo un proyecto con mucha ambición y no sé si verdaderamente se esté destinando el recurso que se requiere para mantener la instalación que se está desarrollando. Cuando se inició el proyecto yo me presenté aquí en la ciudad, pedí el plano y el plano no es lo que está ahorita instalado en el parque. Entonces también pregunté por el mantenimiento, no se me dio respuesta. Sí les pediría que por favor tomen en cuenta esto porque de nada sirve hacer una instalación muy bonita y a los dos, tres años puedes tener este algo totalmente degradado, ¿no? Este por lo pronto yo estoy totalmente a favor de que se remuevan las dos canchas de béisbol. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
Thank you sir.
Guillermo Villaverde en Wendy, I'm sorry, Aello.
Good evening council members, basically everybody said what I wanted to say already, I just, I just ask of you to get this issue resolved as soon as you can. You know, a lot of people been complaining about this, so if you could resolve this as soon as possible that way we can just go on with our daily lives. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you sir.
Buenas tardes mayor y a todos los miembros del concilio, mi nombre es Wendy Aello y soy residente de la calle Garfield. Estoy presente para unirme a la petición de tener un parque digno para nuestros niños, para la comunidad. La petición pues básicamente consiste en que se ha rediseñado, que no solo existan campos de béisbol como lo han mencionado todos los miembros que somos pues prácticamente vecinos. Que se cumpla con las, que haya canchas de básquetbol, de soccer, de tenis conforme a lo que se pagan con los impuestos, ¿no? Conforme a lo que nosotros aportamos pues puntualmente. Esperamos pues ser, no solamente ser escuchados sino que tomen las mejores decisiones para nuestra comunidad. Y pues era solo eso, me voy a exponer eso, gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
María Cortés en Casey Cásares.
Hi, good afternoon mayor, council members, community members. I'm not here to fight over the softball fields, but I do wanna talk a little bit about my softball background here in our community. So growing up I played softball. I've always noticed that there's always been issues with parks and wrecks with softball specifically. Growing up we did have that Caléxico Recreation League for softball. The only park we had was Nosotros because water plant back in that time was for baseball. So the reason I'm up here is because I did notice there's three fields. As a softball community we're excited, we see three fields, we're like hey, when are they gonna be done, when are we gonna be able to use them? I noticed that they've been done since January and they're still closed. So I think it's very heartbreaking just to see that they wanna be, you know, broken down, taken away, you know, whatever it is. It takes a lot of money to do that and they're already there. So it's not so much that, you know, oh it's supposed to be softball or baseball, I mean, I understand it's a community park. There's still a lot of space, there's nothing been done for years, I mean, these parks have been, like they all mentioned, it's just been dirt. So I think mainly what I wanna say is, you know, growing up even in the softball community, we've never had a lot of fields. My travel teams have always needed to practice in All Central and Imperial and Brawley because Caléxico's never really had any softball fields. Now when it comes to those water plant fields, the ones by the border, I think the biggest issue right now is that since there's border crossing now, there's kind of just issues with having those borders where there's one entrance going in and out. Now there's rumors that those might not even be usable to the community. I understand that we still have Nosotros Park, but just like the community mentions, I mean, you go there and everything's already, you know, overworn, worn out. The bathrooms are always super dirty. I did pass by the Córdoba Parks and same thing with the bathrooms, I mean, I don't know if there needs to be more upkeep with maintenance or like they mentioned, you know, maybe like a patrol coming around just to take care of the park itself, right? But all I'm proposing here is the parks are already there. It's gonna be a lot of money to remove them, to replace them, to relocate them and, I mean, I think at the end of the day we're all here for the kids of the community just like they're here for soccer, I'm here for softball, it's nothing that I wanna fight about, I think it's just kind of the fields are already there. They've been there since January, are they ever gonna open or are we just gonna bring it back down and start from square one? So that's pretty much my intake when it comes to softball. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
María Cortés. Juan Angulo en Olga García.
Hi, Juan Angulo. This is actually the first time I come to this setting and I've been here in Caléxico for quite a while, just a little about myself. Did my school here, my kids were here. I had both kids play all kinds of sports, soccer, softball, she's my daughter. And that's one of the things that I'm concerned that when I was parent slash coach, we always had issues in Caléxico with the fields. It was really hard for us to practice and when sable started growing and soccer too, I've seen soccer and sable grow. And the main thing, I was in Caléxico's the fields and unfortunately the weather in Imperial Valley doesn't help. It's too hot, so the lighting is a big factor. And for us to have lighting on the fields is a big plus. I was in coaching in high school when we got the lights for the softball field for the varsity and it was great. One thing that I always got to when I started getting serious with my daughter with travel ball and softball and we started going into bigger cities, just looking at those type of fields, the three setup like that, the fields that you guys made right here, it made me really proud about Caléxico because we always being criticized in Caléxico that we never support our recreational parks and all the stuff. So for me to see that and it's not being built, I understand there's a lot of concerns about people that live around there, but one thing that I've seen in big cities in San Diego, other cities, sometimes they have houses next to golf courses. So big cities, the way they grow is they take advantage of whatever they got available and yeah, sometimes there's some issues, but there's always some safety things that we can put around there to make sure their houses, they're safe and they can still play a sport. So I, I, I was working at Walmart when it became a super center and then I went to another department and I'm a sergeant at Cali Pata State Prison where I deal with inmates, level four and one, the most common thing, why they're there, because they were not had any opportunity as a kid in their surroundings and where they are. So for me to hear that, I hear that basically I'm getting two opinions in Caléxico. And that's one of the things that is frustrating me as a citizen because to me it's hard to believe that the parks are rebuilt. If you open up those doors right now, we can go and practice, I don't have a team right now, but anybody can go and be happy to practice on those fields as it is right now. Because we used to practice in a little piece of dirt that would just let us have it right there. So it's frustrating to see that it's still not built, so for the ideas for other people that they wanna rebuild and do all these other ideas which is great, I don't mind, but to me it doesn't make sense because if we don't have enough money just to open it up and it's already built, we're gonna come up with the money to make all these changes, to remove this part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Olga García, Lorena Ibarra.
Muy buenas tardes, buenas noches. Yo vengo a favor de, de la petición número diecinueve, que remuestren de las canchas. La verdad que estoy concernada de ver tantos niños pidiendo lugar donde jugar. Y lo entiendo, muchos de los niños que están aquí son partes de la comunidad, son de la comunidad. Muchos de ellos los conozco y cómo me expreso. Yo no vengo a decir que, que no quiero que ellos jueguen deporte, pero no a costa de la seguridad de los habitantes de la comunidad. Yo vivo una cuadra, una cuadra y ya no es seguro, ya no es seguro si ustedes pasen en la tarde seis y media. Cómo está el tráfico, cómo hay un solo parking lot, solamente uno. Eh, ya es, es peligroso ya andar caminando por las, por el parque, sí. Yo veo tantas personas ya mayores caminando al, por el canal, mejor se van a caminar alrededor de los canales. Yo lo, yo la petición que, que vengo a hacer aquí es hagan, muevan de lugar esas canchas. No le estamos diciendo que los niños no tienen derecho de jugar, pero también mis niños están en la calle. Se acuerdan que les platicaba que tenía una cancha de básquetbol y ya no juegan ahí porque ya está lleno de carros. Entonces es a costa de que tenemos ahí años viviendo y cada vez el tráfico, la inseguridad se, se vive día a día. Entonces de todo corazón, no es nada contra los niños, al contrario, y digo, ¿por qué no tenemos? ¿Por qué no hay más dinero para, para hacer más canchas? Porque estos niños no deben estar jugando en las calles, váyanse por su, por cualquier comunidad. Están jugando en las calles y eso, y eso no es justo. Entonces yo lo que vengo a favor, seamos justos, seamos justos porque no es seguro. El parque ya no es seguro ni para ellos, ni para los que vivimos en esa comunidad, gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lorena Ibarra, soy del catorce, catorce Harding Coe a una cuadra del parque. Pues no me voy a tomar mucho tiempo, no voy a repetir todo lo que ya dijeron mis, mis vecinos, porque somos vecinos. Nada más es, es este, hacer un llamado a la remoción de las dos canchas de, de béisbol. Yo tengo treinta años de, de padecer una enfermedad y realmente utilizo el, el parque para ir a caminar. La mayoría de las personas que estamos aquí vamos a caminar de las cinco de la mañana a las nueve de la mañana según el horario y por las tardes, de las cinco de la tarde a las nueve de la noche. Entonces sí se, sí, sí se, el hecho de que se hayan puesto estas canchas queda un poquito más aislado y no nos permite la circulación. Este, yo creo que por salud, si ustedes se darán cuenta, la mayoría de los que venimos ahorita tenemos más de dieciocho años viviendo ahí. Entonces la mayoría de nuestros hijos están casados, este, pero vienen nuestros nietos y nosotros somos los que los llevamos al parque. Entonces este, yo creo que un centro comunitario sería prioritario, sí, muchas gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Sandra Cano and Alejandra Ayala.
Good evening mayor and council, council members. My name is Sandra Cano and I have been residing a block away from the park for more than twenty years. And I along with all my neighbors have been paying the CFD taxes for that long and I continue to do so. It really stands to me because I myself have a twenty-nine-year-old daughter who used to play basketball and she never got to take advantage of having that recreational park that was supposed to be built there a long time ago. You know, and it's, it's, it's just really concerning because we were promised a recreational park. And I'm not opposed to having a place where kids can come and, you know, play and practice, you know, play basketball, play softball and whatnot. But it's really sad, you know, that we have these, those three baseball diamonds there and I agree with all the speakers and what can I say that hasn't been said already, right? And like they said, if you can't dismantle them, then let's get creative and build something else. Or like Mr., I think it's Mr. Rocha said that maybe we can put them somewhere else where it's needed, you know? And that's all I wanted to say and thank you for listening. And I hope you guys really take into consideration that we have been paying the CFD tax for more than twenty years. Well, I'm speaking for myself. And you know, what was promised at the beginning was not built. So that's really, really concerning that the city, I mean, not you guys, but you know, prior council members, you know, took advantage of that and didn't come through with a plan that was actually supposed to happen. And thank you for listening to me and have a good night.
Thank you ma'am.
Muchas gracias, buenas noches, gracias a todos. Y yo vengo aquí a favor también de remover las canchas. Lo que pasa es que mucha inseguridad ya en el fraccionamiento y pues nos está quitando la paz, ¿no? De salir a caminar con paz, tranquilidad, saludarnos a los vecinos, ya está lleno de carros, muchos perros, gente que se va a drogar. Se ven hasta condones sinceramente tirados y quiero pido por la protección del fraccionamiento, gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Parureña and Carlos Torres.
Good evening honorable mayor, members of the council and city manager and all the new department heads that are working diligently on this item. I'm here because I was excited to see this on the agenda because I thought it was actually an RFP for phase two to do what we want to do and what the neighborhood wants. I think that the five council members here that are here, we voted you to do the right thing and you have a very hard decision. The first thing is that I love the information that we're getting from the public and this is why I keep asking, we need to have a strategic plan, so we're not going around in circles trying to figure out how we're going to promote these parks. We have a planning director who probably could see an aerial of it. We have an engineer now that can, you know, develop how it's supposed to be developed with what's already there. I've heard people talk about softball leagues, we don't have any here for the girls. Callexico has a gang issue, if you haven't heard, and we need to get, keep these kids busy. It doesn't just have to be baseball, it could also be kickball, softball, little kids playing on those fields. This is a park that was named after an officer who lost his life and at the last community services meeting, we talked about his, his service to the city and why it was named after him. And it was, it was put together so that the community of Callexico, I'm not talking about the neighborhood, I'm talking about the city of Callexico, its residents, including myself, because I live on that side of town, and the youth of our community who don't have a voice here, because they're not the ones that can vote on this, need a park. I'm excited that we have little baseball, three fields there. And yes, we all travel to other cities. I can tell you that Alcentro is inundated with residents from Callexico. The soccer people have been asking for soccer parks. And what did we do? We put them on retention basins. Those are not legal-sized soccer fields. So with a strategic plan, if you had all the kids here, this actually felt like a workshop for me tonight, listening to all the concerns that the citizens here have regarding parks and recreation. So at the last meeting, sometimes it's good to, to, as a commission, is to kind of light a fire and so the information gets out. So we submitted a letter today to the council from the September tenth meeting that the Callexico Community Services Commission met and requested a status report on Cordova, as I have been since twenty twenty-three of August. So several months ago, the city held one workshop and provided a survey that was shut down for further comments. The commission continuously requests status on, on Cordova Park because like everybody else, we want to see it open, with no new information. So this item was on the September tenth meeting and it is, it is on our agenda. So during the commission meeting of September tenth, the commission made a motion, if you don't, if I can have a second, made a motion that we open those fields for the little kids to start playing on them, so they're not dormant. The motion was passed by the chair, Commissioner Jimmy Duron,
Thank you ma'am.
to submit the letter. It was passed by Vice Chair Christina Rojas, Eugenio Ramos and Tony García. I think this is important, mayor, you need to get all this community people.
Yes ma'am, but everybody had three minutes.
And that's why we need to have a workshop, more workshops, so that the RFP can come from the professionals.
Carlos Torres, Isabel Mansillas, Brenda Estrada.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Brenda Estrada, vivo una cuadra del parque y también vengo a solicitar que remuevan las dos canchas y que aprueben el punto diecinueve. Tengo doce años viviendo ahí y cinco años mi hijo tiene buscando dónde jugar básquet en todo Callexico. A veces va a la iglesia, a veces, perdón, unos amigos los dejan jugar en los departamentos. Ayer andaba jugando en la calle segunda y si nosotros tenemos doce años pagando parte de ese parque, me parece justo que él pueda disfrutar de eso mientras que él esté en mi casa. Entonces como vecina vengo a solicitar este punto, muchas gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Isael Martínez, César Rodríguez.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es César Rodríguez, vivo allí también a, a una cuadra del parque. Pues yo no sé cuántas personas tengamos que venir hoy esta noche para, para que ustedes se den cuenta que, que no queremos tres canchas de béisbol ahí en el parque este. Se supone que fue construido o fue diseñado para un parque comunitario. Yo tengo veintiún años viviendo ahí desde que se hicieron las casas nuevas, desde que se prometió un parque y no se ha cumplido. Se ha cobrado más de dos millones de dólares en los últimos veinte años. ¿Qué se ha hecho con el dinero? No lo sé, habría, sería interesante ver qué es lo que ha pasado con ese dinero, porque como dicen, alguien está diciendo aquí, se mueven tierra, se vuelve a poner. Ya se hicieron las canchas, tres canchas de, de béisbol. Veo aquí muchos niños, muchas familias que trajeron, papás que trajeron a los niños, pues porque ellos quieren que se haga el parque de béisbol. Pero este es un área residencial, no es un área comercial. Me supongo que ya vieron el impacto que puede traer el que tenga tanta, tantos niños alrededor, tantas familias alrededor ahí, los accidentes porque puede ocasionar. Me supongo que van a poner más vigilancia, ¿cuántos policías hay en la ciudad? ¿Hay tres en un turno? ¿Cuántos hay? ¿Cuántas personas, cuántos policías van a mandar para allá? Para que vigilen cuando estén los, los, cuando estén jugando los niños, cuando estén las competencias. ¿Qué van a hacer? ¿Ya vieron el impacto? Entonces no es un área donde esté preparada para que se reunan tanta gente ahí. Yo creo que las, las administraciones anteriores no han querido votar por hacerlo correcto. Votamos por ustedes porque pensamos que iban a hacerlo correcto. Si no lo hacen pues van a ser recordados, porque ahora si ustedes votan por eso, van a ser recordados porque hicieron lo incorrecto, lo ilegal. Los otros no lo alcanzaron a hacer, ustedes sí lo pueden lograr, hacer lo incorrecto. Y no estamos en contra del deporte que hagan los niños, pero sí estamos en contra de que lo hagan ahí en esa área donde vivimos muchos y no sé cuántos más ocupan, para entender que no queremos un complejo deportivo, gracias.
Thank you sir.
Carmen Estrada, Enrique Luésma, Maritza Martín del Campo.
Buenas noches, soy Carmen Estrada, soy presidenta de la Liga CPAA y soy directora de la, de la Liga US Soccer, de aquí, la más grande de Estados Unidos. Nos acabamos de afiliar hace dos meses y quiero informarles que recuerden bien que se aprobaron, aprobaron doscientos setenta y tres mil dólares para el campo de soccer y nomás se pusieron cuatro válvulas y el, los tubos que fueron alrededor, así brevemente les voy a decir, como unos cinco mil dólares, los fueron los que se invirtieron. El otro dinero que quedó, queremos que se ponga la cancha de soccer. No tenemos ninguna cancha de soccer. Ojalá sea la última vez de mucho tiempo que ya no vengamos a pedir. Tomad una decisión por favor, que se ponga una cancha de soccer profesional. Hay dinero, se le dio a los bomberos y a ellos hicieron pues lo que hicieron, ¿verdad? Porque es prioridad, estuve con ellos de que se lleva fuera el dinero a los bomberos. Pero ahorita hay un dinero de arpa, ese dinero que se recolecte para irse a una cancha de soccer. La verdad, lo ocupamos ahorita, aquí, son cientos de niños que tenemos aquí en Callexico. Tenemos clubes que tienen ciento treinta y cinco niños, tenemos como cinco clubes. Entonces por favor, una cancha de soccer, una nada más, ya no pedimos muchas, una. Eso, llévenselo y sueña y mañana háblenme y digan que sí van a hacer una cancha de soccer, gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Hello, good afternoon. I, I didn't knew I had to speak, but I am a neighbor of the Garfield Street by the park and I'm here to ask that you guys.
I'm sorry. Can you speak a little bit more into the mic please, so that the translator can hear you, thank you.
And then I think that what the community is asking is that we remodel that park and we make it towards the community. Doesn't make sense to just have one sport there, I think there should be more sports and I think that everybody would appreciate it. And in my, if I could give a personal example, I have a five-month-old baby and we could not walk around the park because the path walk, the walking path is not connected. So you can only do a half a loop. So a community park should be able to, even if there's fields there to practice sports, there also should be other activities going around it because the fields are not used all the time. So we should have areas that can be used all day, every day, I guess. And you, there has been a lot of good ideas from relocation to green areas, more, more trees and, and just a community park. I mean, I think that's what we're all asking, so I think we can all get together and, and have a park for the, for the whole city and not just one specific sport, thank you.
Thank you sir.
Buenas noches a todos, soy Maritza Martín del Campo, tengo veinte años viviendo frente al parque. Se nos dijo cuando compramos ahí lo que iba a ser el proyecto. Mis hijos, como los demás que somos vecinos, ya no les tocó, ¿verdad? Ahorita estoy con los nietos. Y sí, si se dan una vuelta al parque, hay muchos jóvenes, niños jugando softball, soccer ahí y no hay lugar. Niñas con cheerleaders y todo, es bueno, para nosotros decimos que bueno que, que haya esa apertura, para eso se hizo esto. Pero el tiempo de pandemia se hicieron las tres canchas a las cuales nunca nos informaron que iba a haber tres canchas de, de béisbol, qué bueno que haya béisbol, perfecto, pero no tres. No hay, mis vecinos enfrente tienen los muchachos, ahorita ya se fueron a la universidad, jugando afuera en la calle, básquetbol. No hay canchas de, de soccer para los niños, necesitamos que sea incluyente. Las personas que hicieron esto no son personas que incluyeron a la comunidad, incluyeron a un grupo cerrado. Queremos apertura, que se quede una cancha, no decimos que no, claro que no, soy mamá, soy maestra. Y sí queremos que haya una apertura, que se cierren esas dos, que es, no que se cierne, que se haga otro el proyecto como el cual se había hecho de un principio. Es lo único que nosotros pedimos, nosotros no pedimos que los niños no queden, claro que no. Si es nuestro futuro, necesitamos un Callexico bonito, un Callexico libre, un Callexico sin drogas. Y qué es lo que necesitamos, niños jugando incluyentes, no para una sola sección. Se los pido encarecidamente a todos ustedes, gracias.
Thank you ma'am.
Jennifer López and María Ayala.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre, pues ya lo escucharon, María Ayala. Yo vivo en la 1414 Johnson Street. Vivo a dos cuadras del parque. Para ser honesta tenemos como cinco años viviendo ahí, cuatro años. Y lo que más nos gustó cuando vimos esa casa fue el parque. Dijimos, oh, un parque, vamos a tener un parque. Sí, pero lo único que nos ha tocado ver es un cerco alrededor y montañas de tierra porque es lo que yo veo desde mi área. Estoy aquí para apoyar el punto 19 y para pedir la remoción de las canchas. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi there, good evening. I'm Jennifer López. I live in the 1200 block of Holdridge Street. I am a teacher at Caléxico High School. I'm also the varsity softball coach. And just a little background about me, I started working for the Parks and Rec since I was 16. I know the power of sports and youth and what our community needs. And one thing that I'm here for is to advocate to hold the parks as is. As I've grown up from the age of 16 to now, it just seems like our Parks and Recreation Department regressed. I was having a conversation with my son the other day. He's 11 years old. He didn't know that Nosotros Park, once upon a time, had a skate park. This isn't about softball versus soccer. This isn't about a sport versus a sport. This is about the youth of Caléxico. And every time we have something for them, for whatever reason, it ends up getting removed. We can be proactive as community members. Mr. Calderón sat at the school board for many years. I'm sure he is well aware, as was many of you stakeholders here, the Caléxico Unified School District, all schools have lighting. Soccer fields or fields in general are available for those who go through the proper chain of command and request access to fields. There's only one softball field in this community and that's Emerson. The softball field at the Caléxico High School currently has no lights. There's nothing for girls. If we want to go Title IX on this, we can't. But at the end of the day, there's only one softball field and if we think it is okay for our youth to be playing sports at Water Plant, I don't even think that has been remodeled since my son, since my husband played there in the 90s. The fact that we hosted a Little League tournament and we had people from San Diego when our Little League All-Star boys or our girls go out and play in complexes and we have nothing up to par to big cities and we finally have something and we're fighting over who's going to be able to play on the field and other than applauding the fact that we accomplished something as a community and now we're just going to go ahead and get rid of it, I don't understand it. I don't understand why it seems like we always are taking step backwards regardless of who's in front in the panel. We just can't figure it out. And yes, I know this is a disappointment for those who live around the area, but you know what? Unfortunately, this city is full of broken promises. If you talk about those homes that were built by Walmart, there is a lot of things promised to that community too and it has failed. So it's not just one section. It's a matter of us coming together and figuring this out for the youth of Caléxico. It isn't softball versus soccer, okay? It's we have this now, how can we support everyone else? And we have something that's very well.
No more public comments. Okay, no more public comments. We'll bring it back to the council. I'll start with staff. Would the staff like to add something to what they've heard?
Well, thank you, Mayor, City Council and community. It's been, my hands are sore. Mi mano derecha está dolorida. Puerto Malas notas. Very interesting. As someone that's new, as your new city manager, I take direction from the mayor and city council on all issues of policy. But I would like to put staff to work. I would like to look at a resolution that doesn't waste resources already invested, but also opens the park and provides opportunities to a broad use. I think about dog parks. I think about a lot of basketball courts. I think about tennis. Pickleball, maybe not because that pickleball, that's kind of loud. Have you seen, have you heard pickleball yet? It's very popular, but it's a little bit loud, the ball. But I think there's a lot of things that be considered. I look forward to direction from the city council to give staff kind of a broad direction. We need to look at this. We got a new, we got new staff here. We need to look at this and bring back options for you to consider. At the end of the day, the mayor and the city council make the final decision, but we think we can put together some good options for you to consider. So we look forward to doing that. We'll need some time to do that. Depending on how you direct us, I can respond to how much time that might take. Thank you.
Anybody else? From staff? Okay. Councilmember Thailand.
I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone who came out to speak and let us know your thoughts on this matter. It's not light and it really isn't one sport against another. I think our job appears to listen and see how we can come to a middle ground and also be fair. I have a lot of thoughts. I have a lot of questions. It's been a long time coming. We had previous staff that was supposed to give us history on the Cordova Park project. And I didn't remember that initially was, we'll have that information in two weeks. Then I remember the 30 days. I was reminded by staff that initially was two weeks. And it's extremely saddening to sit up here and see that problems. And I have a timeline here that was provided just before I got here by staff in my agenda briefing. And we get this information and it's a common thing in the city and it's just really frustrating. And it's not, nothing against staff. I'm talking about the past, that we deal with these problems from the past. And it's been so many years. And this is not the only thing that as a council we're dealing with. And it's, it is, it's weighing, it's weighing on me because there's, there's two sides in terms of not, not sports, two sides in terms of an investment has already been made, but there's a community that's been put at a disadvantage. And when you do subdivisions, so I hear the term community park, community park. It's very common practice that when a new subdivision comes into a city or anywhere, you do assessments. And from speaking to a neighbor who lives literally right across the street from the baseball section, that individual shared with me that at some point, and this isn't information that we've ever been given, but these are accounts from people that I've gotten to speak with. And this individual shared with me saying that the way they recall, allegedly, right, is the park section that's developed was done by the developer. And the other section, well, has been done by the city, right? And then, you know, there's all these different plans and conceptual plans floating around. But let me circle back. The park. On the plan that I was showed just before the meeting in my agenda briefing, just showed a park, just labeled park. And so when you get subdivisions, it's very typical for the developer to dedicate a portion of land in that subdivision for recreational uses. And what we were shown didn't show anything, just a label of the park. So where am I going with this? When there are projects of this sort, there's assessments done. And the information that I was given a while back, which was a little bit, was regarding CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. Initially, I was told by staff at the time that nothing was filed in CEQA. And then I'm told that a notice of exemption is filed. What's a notice of exemption? So CEQA is a very powerful tool if you know how to use it. And it's very easily manipulated in terms of legalities, the law. And so I come to find just before the meeting that they did file an NOE, but the process to file the NOE or public outreach was not conducted. And that's really important. I've been always a huge proponent of public outreach. That's something I've always talked about and I always tie into. So when you file an NOE, that's the easy way out. If someone comes and challenges it, then they have to look at the impacts. If they don't challenge it, well, your statute of limitations reduces and it's kind of like get out of jail free card. So I have a lot of questions and this is a very tough decision. You know, in speaking with the director of Public Works and the city manager, they have ideas. And it's not easy to pick and choose what, what, what will fit best. But in this case, it's listening to everyone and weighing down. And one of the things that I think we really need to do is that public outreach. And I guess this is part of the public outreach. We get to listen to an entire, you know, community for and not for, and then come to consensus, hopefully. But with that said, it's a lot of information, a lot of testimony. So I might circle back and ask some other questions, but I'll let everyone else go. Sorry.
Okay, councilmember Marcos.
Well, first of all, thank you guys all for coming here and taking time out of your day to help us, help you guys. But I do have a couple of questions and I don't know if maybe Mr. Coin or Mr. Vegas can answer that. In this item, it is said that this park is kind of considered a complex. So one of my questions is what is the definition of a complex? Because I know, and I heard a lot of the people say that they wanted additional things to this park, right? They wanted basketball courts, they wanted a soccer field, all these things. And I do believe these are things that are coming, right? Once we're done with a second phase, then we will develop the next one, right? These are things that are being promised to them. Am I correct?
Yeah, so I mean, there's no clear definition for sports complex. In the Parks and Recreation element of our general plan, it does divide different types of parks by classification. Normally, there's a regional park, community park, then you have a neighborhood park, and then you have what are called pocket parks of varying sizes. It depends on what's established in the Parks and Recreation element. Community parks are typically over 10 acres. Regional parks are over 20 acres. This park early on, and I'll read from an agenda report from back in November 5, 2008, the Victoria Park was described as a regional park even though it is only 15 acres total. Now, if it was ever anticipated to be a sports complex, that's never referenced. And I wouldn't know what the threshold would be to be considered a sports complex. I would think it'd be a more commercial sort of use that would be for profit rather for general public use because there are sports complexes in urban areas, but those are usually privately run. For example, there's Sports Complex USA and Santee and Poway, but those are privately run.
And then my second question is in regards to the impact studies. Can you elaborate a little bit in regards to that?
So before Mr. Vegas' arrival, I did research, the Public Works files, and we did find a notice of exemption that was filed for the design of the park, of the three fields. And that, as councilmember Thailand mentioned, means that the project would be exempt from environmental review in the California Environmental Quality Act. It's very typical for a city to use notice of exemptions for public works projects because there's cost savings involved in doing so. It does limit the statute of limitations for filing a lawsuit based on an environmental issue to 35 days. So once it's filed, and back then the standard was a lot less. State law has now changed where you do have to provide better notice and you have to post it on the state website to make, because a lot of agencies were using notices of exemptions and people weren't finding out about them. But for this particular project, the current three fields, a notice of exemption was filed and the statute of limitations has long passed. It was 35 days after the filing.
So my understanding is that CEQA was bypassed and the exception was because it was attached to an existing park, correct?
Well, not necessarily. Well, the actual addition to the park, that was considered exempt from CEQA. That was the determination by staff at the time, that it didn't need analysis under CEQA. And it was found to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, but you have to file that paperwork.
So that we were cleared from that. We weren't in the wrong or we were not owing any studies.
Yeah, no, it's a common practice, especially for projects such as these. I've seen them used for numerous public works projects.
Okay, all right. And then my last question, and I don't know who would be able to answer this. So if we were to go out and go forth with the RSP, what would be the cost of it?
It just depends on what exactly the effort. If there's community engagement aspect to it, the cost would be a little higher, but it's approximately $100,000. It would include about a third would be dedicated to just research and looking and rebuilding a history and timeline. And then a third would be about, and this is based on research that I completed assessing what other cities had done, where they wanted to supplement or repurpose different areas of an existing park. And it was approximately $100,000 total, the effort, and it included those components, just background research, you know, establishing a timeline by the consultant, of course. And then also just coming up with the conceptual designs is another third. So about $30,000 for outreach, $30,000 for conceptual designs, and $30,000 for research.
And this would not be included in changing anything in the park or this is just research?
This is exploratory and coming up with different concepts and public outreach by a professional firm, by a mutual third party.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Calderón.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. I want to start by first, I'm very disappointed with the items backup, a one pager, an item that has been very, very critical in our community. We only have one page that doesn't really tell us much what we're going to do with this study or what we're going to do with this part. For example, our previous city manager conducted or was conducting an investigation. What happened to that investigation? Second, we had a survey that was being conducted through our community. What happened to that survey? We're talking here about monies that were used by various fundings. We're talking here about monies that were used by various fundings and so forth. It wasn't just CFDs. Today, we're here because of poor planning of prior council. These decisions were made prior to us assuming these seats. And really, I'm not here to set blame on anyone or point fingers. We do have a problem, but we still have to have Callexco in mind. The citizens of Callexco elected us, each one of us, to make decisions that are right for our city, even when they're not popular. The fact is that this park was built not only, again, with CFD funding, but also ARPA, Measure H, impact fees. So these are fees that every citizen in Callexco also pays. And with that said, I believe that this park belongs to all our citizens in Callexco. And I'm going to tell you, I'm not opposed to exploring other options to provide amenities that our past council promised and did not deliver. We have a new public works director slash engineer that has a vision. And yet, we did not allow him to give us options of what we could do with these three diamonds instead of knocking them down. We're here without any information about what's going on with this. So I just leave you with this, saying removing built facilities signals poor planning and waste. Keeping them shows the city can learn from the past while moving forward with the rest of our park. And again, let's allow our engineer to come up with options before we start knocking things down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderon. Okay. The purchase of a home is probably the largest investment anybody is going to make in their lifetime. And many people in Callexco, at least in the last two large developments, they purchased a home with only the plans there because the development had been built. So you have model homes, and then in those model homes, you know, they tell you, hey, you're going to have a park in this area. The last two large developments that we had involved CFDs. Both of them have been a failure with the CFD. So maybe let the city be a lesson. If we're not going to be responsible to our homeowners with those CFDs, then let's stop using them. Because our job here today in the council, we are the legislative body of these CFDs, all five council members. And it's our legal obligation, responsibility to these homeowners to ensure that the covenants are honored. And, you know, there was a comment from one of you guys that kind of bothered me a little bit because this person said, talking about softball, talking about recreation, talking about, it's not about softball, it's not about soccer. Not once did this person reference all the homeowners that are here. Because you're right, it's not about sports. It's about the homeowners that have been ignored for 20 years. And if we don't do right and if we don't honor the covenants, nobody's going to trust us for a future development. It's not about the sports. And I'll tell you why it's not about the sports. Because I'm a soccer mom. My kid played soccer since he was seven. And I've been to sports complexes, and they're all outside of town. And a sports complex is a variety of the same type of field. And I've been to them, and they're not within, they're not in the heart of a neighborhood like this one. And there's plenty of parking and there's security. So let me come back to my train of thought because I just have so many things in my head about this. You know, the fact that these homeowners came back out after saying, why do we go out for? We've been there many times throughout these years. What for? They're not going to listen. Well, let me tell the council here that this is ground zero. We don't get to say, oh, it was past administration, they made bad decisions. No, because you have the opportunity right now to approve a new conceptual plan that'll cost maybe $100,000. But there's $1.3 million in that account. And you could only use it for that park. You could use it for the maintenance of the park. You can use it for construction and modifications to the park. And you can use it for flooding in that area. It's written there. You can't use it for anything else. So why is it sitting in a bank account when you can do something with it? Because if you're going to argue that we're going to spend $100,000 on looking at a plan, at a conceptual design that it's in three phases, one of them is to do the outreach. We might not need the outreach. We just listened to everybody here, and the public works director was taking notes. He's an expert, he's an engineer. I think the message was clear. I think the message to the staff and to the council is clear, unless we don't want to see it or we don't want to hear it. It's very clear. And we know what the community wants. Where was everybody else who's been here before claiming that, you know, they need these fields there? They're not here today. There is maybe four people. Why aren't they here? Because homeowners are going to fight for their properties. Because this is a property issue. It's not about sports because, like I said, I'm no stranger to sports. And these are leagues. And with all due respect to the league presidents, these are pay-to-play leagues. And the high school has opened up their fields for these leagues to go in and play. They have. And I've got messages where they say, oh, we need you to open the baseball fields at Cordova Park because the high school is charging us money to go use a high school. Well, yeah, you charge a fee. You charge a fee to your athletes, to your players. That's what those fees are for, for you to pay that. It's not the city's obligation to have a free space. If we were a rich city, yeah, but we're not. We need to listen to the homeowners. You can't shield yourself behind what past administrations did. It's not an excuse. The reason why that staff report is one-page-only, Councilmember Calderon, is because I did it. I typed it. I did it myself because we've been asking nine months for staff to do it. Now, I understand we haven't had the staff, and we've been changing city managers until we hired our permanent city manager. But I did it because policy allows me to do something. And I did it very general because we wanted this discussion. And that's all it's about. It's about a discussion amongst us, amongst us five, so we don't violate the Brown Act. And I wanted the people to come out and give their testimony because you don't believe what their representative has been saying. You don't believe that those 300 signatures are legit. So they took the time out of their home to come out here trusting this new council, that we're going to listen to them. So don't shield yourself. It's ground zero. This is your decision. The survey. The survey was stopped because it was flawed. The survey had no controls. Someone from China could have logged into that survey. One individual person could have submitted the same survey 200 times. And it was going to cost our staff, thousands of staff hours, to try and verify that the information in those surveys was accurate. That's why it was stopped, because it was flawed, because it was a bad idea. You have the people here present. Why do you need a survey? They're here. You also mentioned that we have a new public works director, and we didn't offer him the opportunity to give a solution. We have, and he has been. He's been here, he's already been doing some designs himself that might help us lower the cost of that conceptual design. He's here, he listened to the people firsthand. He knows what they want. We know what they want. If you don't know what they want, then you weren't paying attention. He is being given the opportunity. He is an expert, he is going to decide how to proceed. But the reason why we want to move forward with this RFP is because we have other projects that he needs to work on. And they have deadlines, they have funding deadlines. He can't drop everything else. We can't not fix the roads. We cannot try and do our wastewater infrastructure upgrades. We can't stop what we're doing for him to redesign this park. So that's the reason why we're going out and requesting professional services so they can come out, parks specialists. They can come out, they can look at the park, and they could say, hey, the park is fine, it was built good. You're not going to have an impact. Or they can say, who built this? Or they can say, you know what, this is not going to work. With one field, you're going to have a problem. Now imagine with three. That's why we're paying for them to come out. And it's well worth it because if it costs $100,000, which we don't know, that's why we're going out for the RFP. It's like, why wouldn't you want to go out for an RFP? Why would you shut the door on yourself to solve, to bring solution to this issue that's been 20 years long? No applauses, please. I said no applauses. Anyway, that's all I have to say. If any other council member would like something else to say, go, please feel free to speak.
I do have a question. Does staff know why we haven't started on Phase Two? Is there any backup on that? Why did it stop? So what stopped all this initially? What stopped?
We'd have to research that, Councilmember.
Yeah, I think that the RFP is to look at options. No one's saying to demolish it. The purpose of the RFP is to do. I love public outreach. I'm a huge proponent, especially because we don't have the time to be doing public outreach or capacity or a lot of us, the experience, to do a very thorough, robust public outreach campaign. And assessment. So RFPs of this sort, you go after companies who have experience doing all this type of research. And then they provide feedback. I think it's important because there's so many things that, you know, if it stays, it stays. If it's proposed to repurpose certain areas, then it still has to come to a vote. Nothing more is occurring here than seeing if we vote to do an RFP and allocate funding to research this further. There's so much information that hasn't been brought. And as Director Coyne said, a third of this is dedicated to the history, which is important because I just asked a question and not one of us could answer it or knows.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't allow public speaking from out. Thank you. But we can certainly take that information in the future. Okay. Well, he didn't do anything with all the information they gave him, so. Are you finished, Councilmember Ty Linda?
No. And I also can't stress enough how thankful I am for everyone who's come out and who, everyone who's come up to this podium to speak. It's really important. I feel like sometimes, given situations like this, our community can suffer or become apathetic. But it's these times that really help, at least I'd like to say me as a council member, put everything into perspective and remember that I'm here to listen and provide solutions to problems. And unfortunately, this one has gone on for a very long time. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to say anything?
I'm good.
Okay, so I'm going to motion to approve item number 19, which is authorize the city manager to proceed with an RFP for a conceptual park design to provide conceptual plans and cost estimate for the changes to Cordova Park as per the workshop held on June 10, 2025. And I do want to clear out that, as the backup says, this doesn't mean we're approving a plan. It means we're going out to ask, how much does it cost for you to come out and do this study for us so that we can make a decision from there? Do I have a second?
I'm so sorry. Can we, I have a question. Because I'm sorry, I have a lot of things on my head. I have a question, not to the motion, but can I ask something? Can we let the motion die and then come back to it? Okay, real quick.
Okay, so do I have to retract the motion? Okay. I retract the motion.
So we're about to do the vote. Obviously, we don't know how that's going to turn out. But I do have a question. If we do motion and it gets approved, is there staff, city manager, throughout the process, if the RFP gets approved, is it possible to open the parks and see how it's working while we do the RFP so it can be used or no? It's just a question.
Okay, please, order. Stop, please. Don't speak from your seat, please.
So is a park even ready to anything? It's not complete from what I understood, what I was told?
Well, the facility still needs some components. So as is, is not complete. So it's doable to open it probably for an activity or something like that, but not for the purpose of having designed. And there are missing pieces.
Okay, so it's not finished. We have no history on why even Phase Two hasn't been started. No history on why Phase One hasn't even been completed, correct? That's where we're at? All right, okay. Sorry, I'm ready for if anyone wants to do a motion.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to, again, motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with an RFP for a conceptual park design to provide conceptual plans and cost estimate for the changes to Cordova Park as per the workshop held on June 10, 2025. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Norikumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Proten La Gaspe recused himself. Councilmember Ty Linda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Lo voy a decir en español. El RFP es un documento formal para solicitar el presupuesto detallado de posibles proveedores o contratistas para un proyecto, describiendo los requisitos y presupuestos y cronografía del proyecto y los costos. Sin embargo, la ciudad tiene un director de obras públicas capacitado y en quien yo confío plenamente. He ha hablado con él y él me dijo que él puede hacer este trabajo. Yo estaría dispuesta a aprobar esto solo si ese dinero es adquirido del CFD. Pero no se estipula de que venga de ahí el dinero. No sé si se puede en este momento estipular y cambiar eso. Por eso es que yo quiero esa aclaración antes de continuar. Y perdón de que no lo dije anteriormente, pero si hay esa... Y perdón de que no lo dije anteriormente, pero si hay esa stipulation en el, en, en este artículo, se puede todavía agregar o sería cambiarlo completamente?
In the staff report where it says fiscal impact, it says any costs associated with this request would be funded through the Bravo Roriles CFD account.
Entonces acepto.
So for the record, the vote is yes? Okay.
Councilmember Calderon?
No.
Okay. Please stop. Okay. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to item number... Actually, I'm going to take a five-minute recess so we can take a break, use the restroom. Okay. We're going to move on to item number 14, Appointment of General Commissioner to the Collexco Housing Authority Board. Do any council members have a nomination?
I nominate Mariano Valenzuela.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, no second. Do we have any other nomination?
I nominate Juan M. Ortiz.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Ty Linda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item number 15, Consideration of Establishing a Registration Fee For The 2025 Christmas Parade.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and public present. The committee for the Christmas parade met, and they are recommending for you guys to consider a possible registration fee for the parade. We've been doing, the city has been in charge of organizing the parade since 2018, and we have not charged registrations fees at any moment since then. So what they asked me to do is just to compare what other cities are charging, and the information is in front of you. This is from last year's registrations. Schools were free in El Centro. Then regular registration was $35, and elected officials or public, or public office, in public office or running for public office was $100. And then in Prio, schools are free, regular 25, early birds 10. So what they asked me to recommend to you guys would be to consider schools for free, regular registrations at $30, elected officials, people in public office or running for public office, 125, with an early bird discount until October 31st with half the price. Regular entry 70, 15, and elected officials $70. So you can, I'm providing you with options for you to consider. You can leave it for free, as before. You can establish those that are recommended by the committee, or you can provide any other option that you may want to consider.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comment from the council?
I do have a comment in regards to the official fees. I know it's $125, but my problem is, is if we already have someone that's officially in a position, whether it's the IID, the supervisor, county supervisor and so forth, we're collaborating with them and so forth. As a matter of fact, they're even donating to our parade.
The county is?
The county. Well, I mean, I'm working on Monsieur Escobar, so. What I'm getting at is that I don't think, I mean, it's not much, but 125. I mean, if they're going to, we're collaborating, we're trying to, you know, get funding for Collexco, not 125. We're trying to get more money from them.
Correct.
I don't see us charging them. However, if we have candidates that are going to be running for office, they should pay, because it's part of campaigning. And that's, that's my only comment I have.
Anybody else?
I do have a question. What are these fees proposed to be used for?
To go back, the city put general funds monies up to $20,000. So I don't think, well, there's nothing to, to compare them to, because we have not charged before, but I don't think we're going to get more than $1,000 back from registration fee.
How much?
A thousand, the most. Because free, the majority of our Christmas parade entries come from school, from the schools, and those will be for free. So I don't see a lot, but who knows? I was exploring the idea with our finance director in being able to, and maybe she can help me explain how it would work in terms of the monies go in and then they get reallocated to be able to be used for expenses for the current parade at that year, but maybe she can provide more info on that.
Yes, the conversation that I have with Norma was, as we receive those fees, we're going to use those fees to offset expenditures, meaning that as we get a fee collection, then our expenditures are going to...
Increase by that amount.
Increase by that amount. Your, your expenditure budget.
So it would help out to pay also for the event itself, yes.
Okay.
Additional funding, let's say, besides the $20,000.
All right. I do have a question, or I have an idea to add.
Yes.
So I, I'm all for the fees that are being proposed. I think, though, that we should add in there, our service members, so veterans want to participate and they have honorable discharge, that they should be allowed to either free or at, you know, I don't know, $10, $15, a half the cost of what is 35, $1250. I don't know what the council thinks, but I, I do think we should honor our service members who are dishonor, I mean, honorably discharged.
Excellent point. And you guys can, yes, determine those fees however you want to decide them to be. There was a question that was asked but was not discussed during the committee meeting. We got the question of, what about the current members of the city council? And I told them, our city council. And I said, wow, well, they didn't mention anything at the committee level, so it is up to you guys whether you would, guys would be exempt from, from paying the fee if you want to avoid it, you know? It's, the fees is up to you guys to decide what to do with them, if you want to impose a fee.
I concur with Calderon in regards to waiving for anyone who's donating.
Yes. So anyone who's sponsored?
Anyone who's sponsoring should not be charged.
Got it.
Everyone else should pay.
Additional funding.
I have a question. Is this for those that are outside, elected officials, for them, only the ones that are sponsoring? Okay. Is that what? Yeah, I do concur with that. Anyone that's sponsoring that are elected... Yeah, I do concur with that, anyone that's sponsoring that are elected officials, but I do feel that each council member here should pay, should assist with the city and I don't think it'll look good if we don't put money into it.
Yes.
I just don't think it's fair to say like other people don't pay either. I think we should all pay, even if they're, and like, but let me finish. No, no, even if they're sponsoring, because what, what's the level of sponsorships, like, do you have options?
Yes, we do.
So what's the lowest?
The lowest is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, then, yeah, never mind, never mind, never mind.
And the highest fee is a hundred and something, right?
The, the highest sponsorship which we have not gotten one, it's three thousand dollars.
No, I mean, the, the, so the lowest level of sponsorship is higher than the highest level of fee, so it makes sense not to charge a fee on top of it.
I would say.
Also, we shouldn't charge the veterans nothing.
So veterans, free.
Nothing.
Understood, yeah.
Honorably discharged, obviously.
Yes.
Okay, so can you kind of repeat what it's looking like?
So if you guys will make a motion to have a fee, what I'm gathering is free for schools. If you're okay with a regular registration fee of thirty dollars, that would be thirty dollars. If you're okay with the elected officials running for office, a hundred and twenty-five. Early bird discount would be fifteen regular entries, elected officials seventy. Veterans, doesn't matter when they register, as long they meet the deadline, the ultimate deadline to register, they will be for free, who, veterans are honorably discharged. And any sponsorship above two hundred and fifty dollars would also go in for free if they want to participate in the parade. That's what I gathered.
Yeah, I do have a question, though, and this is for city manager and probably maybe legal and finance. Since we're creating these fees, is there a process we have to follow? Because they're not created before, so it was free before and now we're implementing fees or...
So they, so they have a, they have a committee that has been meeting, a Christmas Parade Committee, and they recommended it.
Is it gonna come back then formally as a resolution to approve and then go in effect in so many days, or?
No.
So, but are we following the correct processes, is what I'm asking, for charging the fee, imposing the fee?
Before I brought this to city council, I had asked legal if we were able to bring it like this, and they mentioned that because it's a once-in-a-year time...
I just have that question, so I'm...
It was cleared by legal.
Okay, so just to be clear, the motion would be consideration of establishing a registration fee for the 2025 Christmas Parade, as is in the staff report, with the exception of, or with the addition that veterans would not pay a fee, honorably discharged veterans would not pay a fee, and anyone who is sponsoring would also not be required to pay a fee. So that would be the motion. Am I correct?
And by sponsoring, you mean based on the levels of sponsorship?
Any level, because the lowest level is higher than the fee, than the individual fee.
Let me ask you for clarification. What about a donor of fifty dollars? What about a donor of a hundred dollars?
Well, that's less than, anything less, why would they donate, it's the same amount.
So that's kind of why I was asking the question, if we're waiving, like, say, that's why I asked, like, what's the sponsorship fee, because I didn't know if there was levels already established and I didn't want to assume. And then I was thinking like, oh, so if I give twenty bucks, then...
Well, I think there's a difference between a donation and a sponsorship.
Yeah. So donation is any, anyone who wants to donate, it's, it's accepted, yeah, our arms are open to free donation.
But they still have to pay to participate.
But they would pay for to participate, that's what I'm gathering.
So I'll donate fifty dollars, I don't have to pay the hundred and...
No, you would pay both. Okay, so is the motion clear or no? You want me to repeat it?
Yes.
Okay. So consideration of establishing a registration fee for the 2025 Christmas Parade, as is on the staff report, with the addition that honorably discharged veterans would not have a fee, that anyone sponsoring at any level would not have to pay the fee, and that donations are welcome. Is there a second?
I second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, set a date, time, and location within thirty days for the capital improvement workshop to identify the city's priorities, deadlines, and funding and post-public notice. Do we have any comment? Any public comment, I mean? No? Okay, do I have...
Actually, I have a question. And it's for Mr. Villegas and the city manager. Is thirty days enough time for you guys to develop a proper workshop?
Okay, I've been, I had been with the city just a few weeks, and this is a challenging report. So thirty days, if we do something within thirty days, it's more like the preparation of that list of the projects and deadlines. But if the city council members wants to hear about a strategy or a plan as to how we are going to address all those commitments, I would recommend to wait more like a sixty to eighty days, because then you are going to hear not only about the list of the commitments, but how we are going to be approaching them.
Thank you.
So sixty days would be something that you could be able to work with?
Yes, yes, sixty to eighty days. It's, I mean, for me, it's more comfortable, because I'm going to be able to provide, not only, I'm not going to recite a list, I'm going to tell you guys.
Information.
These are our commitments, these are the deadlines, and this is the way we are approaching them to make them happen properly.
So it appears that you're shooting for eighty days.
Yeah.
Sixty. Well, he said sixty to eighty days.
Sixty to eighty days, if you want to hear...
You'd be more comfortable in eighty days?
Yes, if you want to hear about solutions. I mean, because the list I can, I can pull the words.
So, yeah.
I'll motion, I'll motion to...
Well, let's, let's have the, the remainder of the discussion. Councilmember Thailanda, do you have any comment, question?
I just think that, I'm fine with sixty days, but I do think that we should include the thirty-day update, because historically, and it's nothing, just historically, we've been promised information and we don't get updates, and we then don't hear from, from anything. And not saying that that's the case here, but I don't need details. I do, I want to know what these sixty projects are, just tell me what they are, and then I'll wait for how you're gonna do them, because we've been told, and I mean, the city at large, we have a hundred and twenty million dollars, and then we have a hundred and eighty million dollars, so I'm not really trying to figure out where the money's going right now, but I am trying to figure out what projects they are specifically. So I, I would like to at least have an idea, just a project list, an informational item at thirty days, I don't need any more details, and then at sixty days, everything you think that you can, or if you need eighty days, I don't have a problem. But if it's eighty days, then at least at forty days, can I just have a list, an idea, so I can know what's going on? Because we get asked, I know I get asked, and I, I would like to be able to at least say, you know, these are the projects and more information is to come. But that's just my, my thoughts.
I think because of the fact that we're thinking of doing a retreat within the next few, I'm assuming a month, and then asking for that report, I feel confident that the sixty days would be enough, because I think that at some point, we're gonna be able to speak to Mr. Villegas in regards to what our priorities are as a council, and then he'll be able to hone in on what really is important to us.
Okay, I agree that especially because of, of what we just passed and we've got work to do, I know I requested thirty days. Then when we had in the briefing, you did mention that, hey, I would like to present something better, more complete to you guys, I need sixty days. I'm good with the sixty days, not the eighty, and I'll tell you why not the eighty, because then you're going into December. And then you've got the Christmas parade, then you've got the holidays, then you've got the change in, in, in mayorship, we've got a lot of things going on in December. So I'm fine with sixty days as long as it's sixty days, because I know, I know the Hebrew Park is next year, I think we have to move on it. So it can't, we cannot not know or be aware about what these capital improvements are and their deadlines and the funding sources and the priorities, which is what we would be. So it needs to be done this year, and I think sixty days would, would be good, because like I said, eighty is going into December and we're just gonna be too, we're gonna have too much going on. Is that doable?
Yeah, yeah, minimum sixty days, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any mother, any other comments, questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, is it thirty-day report, sixty-day analysis, or just sixty days?
Oh, no, just the sixty days, yeah, so we're not doubling the work.
No stress.
Yeah, but we're not gonna expect a list, we're gonna expect a full, you know, okay.
Should it be maybe, what are we expecting, is it at a council meeting or a special?
It would be a workshop.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, is there a motion to, so the, it would be set a date, time, and location within sixty days for the capital improvement workshop to identify the city's priorities, deadlines, and funding and post-public notice. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, are we putting a date?
Well, I asked if there was more comments and you said no.
Cause after you...
Now we have to remove our motion.
For sixty days.
Okay, second, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number seventeen, discussion regarding adopting a zero-based budget policy to be in place for the 2026, 2027 fiscal year, and I would like to ask our city manager to let us know why this is a wonderful idea.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. I was told that during my interview for the city of Callexico that I, I discussed this concept of zero-based budgeting. And I don't doubt if someone believes that I said, talked about zero-based budgeting, that I did mention it. In my view, zero-based budgeting is something that, it's a buzzword that, that is used by government agencies to, to talk about a more efficient and more thorough job of analyzing a budget, rather than just carrying over what was done from the previous year. So in short, I think this is something with direction from the city council that we can, we can work towards. I haven't even reviewed fully and thoroughly the city's, Callexico's budget, but this is, there are concepts in zero-based budgeting that we can, that we can implement in the budgeting process. So we, that's still several months away, so I'll have time to talk to the, the finance director and see how we could implement these principles, some of these principles. Will, at the end of the day, our process of zero-based budgeting be exactly like it is done perhaps in the private sector? Probably not, but there are things that we can, that we can implement. So that would be my comments on the matter, and, and I would ask for the council to give us direction, knowing that, again, we're gonna, we're going to implement some of these principles no matter what, because we're gonna take a thorough look at those individual line items and expenditures in our budget. So that's something, as a new city manager, I'm gonna implement that anyways department, with, with each department. For instance, I would not sit down with the fire and police departments and say, I'm the new city manager, I accept, just, just carry over everything you did last year. That, that wouldn't be appropriate. I'm the new city manager, I would ask for a much more thorough analysis for each line item in their budget, as well as public works and, and planning, et cetera, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. So the reason why I have asked for the council to have a discussion on this, because that's, that's pretty much what it is, for the council to discuss and see if this is a good idea and see if, if you would like to give direction that the city manager, so that we don't waste his time, if that's not, if that's not the, the road we wanna take. But the reason why I've been asking for this is because, yes, he brought it up in his interview, and so I started doing research on it. And it wasn't on the private sector, it was actually the research that I did, it said that it's, it's been used by several city governments. And the reason why I really like this approach is because it justifies expenses. So you're not, you're not, it's not adhering to historical spending, so it's not like you always get the same thing every year. So it, it allows the managers to, you know, maybe if you're one of those departments that has a very small budget every year, it, it gives you the opportunity to, to, to be creative and, and say, here, city manager, you know what? I've been wanting to do this program for so long and I haven't been able to because I'm always stuck with the same amount. So if, if, you know, if you'll listen to me, here's my, here's my plan, this what I would like to do, this, how much it's gonna cost, and then by doing that, you give smaller departments an opportunity to grow. At the same time, when you have larger departments that always have the same budget and have the highest budget, you know, they're, they're gonna use it or lose it, they're not, they don't wanna lose it. So sometimes that, that creates wasteful spending, because now you're starting to buy things that you don't really need, but you're just buying them so you don't lose that, that budgeting. Also, the idea behind it is that by establishing a policy, we, we start putting deadlines within the policy. So then, so for example, you'll say by December thirty-first, just to put an idea out there, every department will submit their budget to finance, and by February twenty-eighth, finance will submit the budget to, you know, the city manager. And by March, the city manager will initiate, or have workshops with the council members to review the budget, and by June, the council member will approve the budget. So that's, that's the idea behind it. Obviously, you're, you're at, you would, it would be at your discretion, the policy that you wanna propose, but, but the direction or the discussion that I wanted to have up here is say, if the majority of the council agrees and says, yeah, I think it's a good idea, I would like the city manager to spend that time and, and present to us something different than, than what we've been having for the past many years. So that's, that's the idea behind it, it's for discussion, and so if, does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do.
I have a question. Go ahead, Dave.
I'd like to hear from our finance director, her take regarding the, this item.
Yes, so I agree that zero-based budgeting, you know, it does have benefits, you know, it's improving accountability, enhancing transparency, and encouraging a detailed review of expenditures. The challenge is that from municipal governments, including the city of Callexico, it presents practical challenges. As much of the budget, it's already devoted to essential ongoing obligations, you know, such as what I've mentioned before, salaries, benefits, you know, we have collective, collective bargaining units, insurance premiums, leases, utilities, and other expenditures that are fixed. Based on the research that I have done so far, I have not found any cities in California that use a fully zero-based budget. Most cities have implemented other alternative budgeting methods, because zero-based budgeting poses to be a challenge for a municipal government versus a private company. Other budgeting approaches, you know, you have performance, performance-based budgeting, priority-based budgeting, you have program budgeting, or even, I saw a lot of cities that are using like high, hybrid approaches. And, you know, any of these might be a more practical option for the city of Callexico. Just to give you an example, what, what the city of El Centro did, it was more of a hybrid model, because for example, you have your seventy-four percent of your budget that is fixed, you know, that's your salary and benefits. That has to be incremental, because it's gonna increase, you know, salaries, COLAs, benefits, everything increases. And then you have the remaining twenty-six percent, which is more discretionary, and that would be performance, we used to use performance-based, meaning that we use actuals. We analyze, we go back one year, two years, and we analyze a line item and we see, okay, if you haven't been using this line item, you know, let's say you have a budget of ten thousand, if you haven't been using the full ten thousand the last two years, that means that you don't need it. So then we decrease it to, let's say, five thousand, or whatever the actual is. So then we decrease it to, let's say, five thousand, or whatever the actuals is. So it's a combination of budgeting methods that we can use, so, you know, that can be explored at a future time. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, yes, and this question is for Mr. Martinez. And the reason I'm asking this question is because I called several cities, neighboring cities, about this process, and none of them do it. So my question to you, Mr. Martinez, what municipal city does this? I know it works and I did some research, if you're running a private business, it's beautiful. I mean, but I couldn't find anywhere where this process is used in a municipal.
I am unaware of a city government adopting, a municipal city like ours adopting a policy for zero-based budgeting. What I am familiar with, in my experience, in mostly San Diego, Los Angeles County, are cities that they, they, I would say they utilize aspects of the principle of zero-based budgeting. But it's not a policy, it's not, it's not something even in writing, it's just something that they, again, is a buzzword, but it could be a good buzzword in the sense that they, 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 like Carla was mentioning, not just repeating and bringing, carrying over what happened last year as the principle, the beginning of your new budget year, but analyzing the history of those expenses, let's say going back three to five years to understand, you know, what, what, what the usage was of that individual line item and what is the, what is the correct amount for the, for the new year.
Well, and again, I mean, I understand that, because we already have set obligations for each department, their spending and so forth, but I know that you have the experience that if we need to cut, which we need to cut, if we need to save money, that you have ideas of how, instead of giving them a thousand dollars for materials, you give them five hundred dollars for materials and ask them to make it work. So I'm just confused that, that this process does not work for a municipality, city, I mean, to expect, I mean, our staff are already underworked, understaffed, or overworked, better yet, and to put another burden on them, I don't think it makes any sense. But again, we can put up for vote and then go from there.
I have a question. How much would it cost for us to implement this? Because it would be a whole new accounting system. You would need technology and implementation, you would need training, it requires more extensive time to develop this. Do you have a plan on how this would be implemented?
I don't, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I don't think we would need a new system, it would require more analysis, and that would be, result in more time and effort by the finance department.
Would you hire more personnel for that?
It's, it's possible, depending on the depth of the analysis desired by the council, but I think what's most important, for instance, in zero-based budgeting, the most important thing is analyzing actuals going back a certain timeframe, right? Analyzing actuals, and that does take time. And I'm not, I haven't had those kind of in-depth discussions with, with our finance director to know how user-friendly our software, financial software program is, to pull up those actuals, let's say going back five years. But that's one of the, probably the most important aspects of analyzing a zero-based budget. I'd also remind, and I know the finance directors love to say this, but it's very true, a budget is, is just a budget. It's a, it's a guesstimate for what we plan to do in the year. I don't know of any organization that ever gets it right on the dot, you know, it's always, there's always variances, there's always changes, so, you know, even with zero-based budgeting procedures or policies in place, we still may, you know, be off the mark depending on how the year goes. So, but that's why we have mid-year and even other adjustments, to come back and make adjustments to the budget. In summary, I, I'm not stressed out personally about whether we get direction to follow this procedure or not. I think that as we, as I sit down with the finance department to, when we get into budget season, I think that we can outline some principles that we would follow and instruct the departments to follow, and we can update the city council as to what we plan to do and get your further input at that time.
What would happen if a department's not budgeted for an emergency item? Where would that money be coming from?
It would come from reserves.
And what, you're aware of the audits that we're under right now, correct? Do you think our staff has enough time to do, work with these audits, plus now reinvent the wheel into a zero-based budget?
It, I, we, to answer the question, we are, we are understaffed right at the current moment to deal with, yes, the audits and the other things that are challenging us from the past. So we're working a lot in the past on, in a lot of issues. So I would, I would have to balance, we would have to balance what we can implement in the new budget season, as far as research and policies and diving into the numbers with, yes, what we are dealing with, with the audits and other, in other areas. So it's gonna be a balance, that's gonna be something, frankly, that internally, in working with the finance department, we're gonna, I'm gonna have to figure that out as it comes.
Well, because this is very difficult for me to understand, how you're just coming up here with a hypothetical, without any answers. It's not easy to make a decision based on, wow, we could do this or we could do that. I feel like we need something more, you know?
Yes, Councilmember, I did not propose this agenda item, it was, it was proposed by the mayor, that for discussion, so I did not propose this item. My response to the item is that we can, if directed, we can consider.
I'm sorry, let me just interrupt real quick, we need to do a motion to extend the time for the meeting, do we have a motion to extend? Well, a motion to extend, do we have a second?
We set, we set a time limit.
Oh, we gotta set a time limit. Okay, thirty, thirty minutes, you think, will be done? Yeah? Thirty minutes.
We'll probably longer close session, but we can do that once we get to thirty minutes.
Motion to extend thirty minutes, do we have a second?
I second.
Roll call.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protemla Gaspie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tylenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I apologize, I didn't understand, I didn't know that you didn't have those answers.
So Carla, the question that I have, with or without implementing this policy, we'll be doing this, correct?
Doing the zero-based budgeting?
Right.
No, we're not currently doing zero-based budgeting.
No, no, what I'm saying is that, do we, do, in your opinion, do we need this? I mean, you're doing the appropriate budgeting, the cost estimate, the rollovers if needed or whatnot?
Yes, well, I mean, as you, part of the process of a budget, you know, you are still analyzing the accounts, you're still having to go in there and, I mean, it's not where we just come up with a random number, right? There's a lot of analysis, a lot of work, a lot of hours, a lot of effort that goes into creating that budget.
So you're doing the work.
So regardless of the method, I mean, you know, we are doing the work.
So I wanted to have this discussion because the council's primary duty is, is to look at the funding, right? To make sure that the funding is being spent as it should be spent on needs that the citizens do need. That's our number-one job. And the reason why I brought this up was because, you know, the, we, I don't know, it just, it just, I know we have new staff and stuff, but I wanna, I want to be sure that, that there are deadlines. I wanna make sure that there's deadlines met, I want to make sure that wasteful spending is identified. And whether it be called a zero-based budget or a hybrid budget, or one of the budgets that you mentioned, to me, it doesn't matter, I just want to know what it's being spent on. And I wanna be able to say, okay, well, you know what, that doesn't make any sense, why do we need that? Please justify it for me, city manager, and then you can give us a justification. But the current budget that we see, I don't remember how many pages that one was, but it's just a bunch of line items that have no real description. I'm not saying we have to go in debt and describe everything and it'd be a super-long meeting, but it's just, it's just, you know, kinda, we're not thinking outside the box anymore. And, and, and I think this is, what I, what I want this new council and this new staff to do is to think outside the box. I know, I think everybody here, the, or I know Carla and Mr. Coyne and Mr. Riegas and city manager, you all came from different cities. Did you guys have a budget policy in those cities?
We would actually look more at actuals, so it was similar to Alcentro's process.
That's what you would do? How about the rest of you? Same?
Actuals.
So if that seems to work, then that's fine, but I, my main thing is, let's have deadlines, let's do these things with time, and I just want to be able to identify wasteful spending and opportunities. Because if we can't do that, then we, we, we're never gonna grow. We have to be able to identify opportunities, and we can only do that if, if, if we're able to admit, you know, or a department is able to admit and say, "Hey, I don't need this extra million dollars because I already have everything I need." But, you know, I think departments don't generally do that, you know, you always wanna keep every penny you have. So by doing this, it's, you know, justify it, it doesn't have to be zero-based, you don't start from scratch like the salary, we knew that, that obviously salary, that's probably your thing, you know, they don't even have to mess with that. But the thing is, the justification of the things, it's what I, what I think is necessary because if, I don't know how far we've been historically, we've been going off of a budget historically, but, you know, I would love to see where we can have an opportunity and without doing something, maybe, like I said, maybe this, this upcoming budget, we can study it a little bit more so that moving forward, we all feel comfortable with those numbers. Because we don't know if there's an extra little pile that a department is holding on to that another department could, could, you know, be able to do so much with it. So that's, that's my concern and that's the reason why I brought it up. Now, you do, you know, that's the direction that, or, not, not the direction, because it's, it's what I would like to see in a budget. I wanna be able to identify any wasteful spending and any opportunities. And whatever way you can figure that out, you know, it's up to you. So then, I'm assuming, I'm assuming the zero-based budget is off the table and I'm fine with that, but I wanted to have this discussion, and that was the point of it. So no action is taken unless anybody wants to make a motion to do a different version of it. If not, then we can move on to the next one.
Oh, I do have some things to say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So first of all, thank you for putting this item on the agenda, it's a good exercise. If we're all thinking the same, we're not thinking. And we have a new team, we have new team members, and for me, it's important to have this conversation, I'm not, the methodology, we're gonna get there, we're gonna figure it out, because I would like our budget to be a distinguished budget, like other cities in this valley have gotten awards for it, that's my goal. So how we get there, we'll figure it out as we go, but I think it's important to hear from the rest of the council and, and really see what the expectations are, and I'll tell you why. So there may not be a zero-based budget fully for municipalities, but, and so I have a background in this stuff. But you take, you take inspirations from it, so you take what works for your city, right? And all I'm looking for, I guess, is here in Callexico, and from experience and behind the scenes, things that are reported as proposed, and I'm gonna use the city attorney as an example, sorry, Carlos, the budget's three-eighty, right? And then actuals come back at eight-hundred thousand, but then again, the next year comes around and we're proposing the same thing, if not a little bit inflated. So we, we need to also look at how we're reporting that. So those are, that's, that's just my feedback, you know what I've seen, I know that's not yours, you know, you're new here, and, but it's important to have this conversation so that the expectations are met, not just from the council, but what we hear from the community, because I think in the short amount of time that this new team has been up here, one of the biggest things we've heard from the community is the budget, it's not transparent, it's not clear, there's not enough information. We, we need to make sure that we're going above and beyond, so setting the expectation, and however we get there, we'll figure it out. But I think that we do need to create at least a policy or an expectation of like, okay, budget season's coming around, so I can expect to have a workshop at this time, because I can tell you, from other cities that I worked at, it was like clockwork. And so I don't think I've experienced that in this city yet, and hopefully we can get to that, is all I wanna add to this. So, thank you.
I will say in closing, council members, it looks like we will have the new team in place before the budget cycle starts. So hopefully that'll be a positive impact on, on the process of the budget. So, yes, I'll come from my experience, we'll, I'll talk to finance, her experience, we'll draw from other experiences, but at least we'll have the full team in place before the cycle starts. So thank you for the discussion, and we'll, we'll take it to heart.
Okay, nobody else? Do we, city clerk, do we, what do we do to not have any action on it? Nothing?
File.
Do we have to do something?
No.
Just move on to the next one? No action? Okay. Item number eighteen, create an ad hoc committee for the city of Callexico International Airport and appoint two council members to the committee. So, I also brought that one up, and it was also a discussion. The purpose of it is to have a discussion and possible action if that's what is decided. We all know that the airport has been in the red for the past three years, and there has really been no plans or solutions brought to the table. We, the general fund cannot continue to subsidize the airport, so we need to start having those meetings, which is the reason why the suggestion to create an ad hoc committee was there. The, appoint two council members is also just an idea, it could be one, it can be none, but, but I wanted to have that discussion. I think it's important that we need to start having these meetings so that these people can come to the council and say, "We've got a plan," or say, you know, "It's useless, let's shut it down," or, you know, as a recommendation. So that's, that's where that comes at, too. Do we wanna start with it with staff, or does staff have anything to say, or do we go on to council?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I, I think it's, it's a, it's a good idea to put together an ad hoc type of committee for such a large item as this. I gotta say, I've never run across the management of an airport by, in a municipality, so this is my first time. I would, my only comment would be, as we approach the discussion and the workshop of priorities, depending on where this falls, is, is, again, the amount of time we would allocate to it. So if this is considered one of the higher priorities, number-one priorities, the ad hoc would, would be very important. If for some reason this doesn't fall into the list of higher priorities, then it would be something that would be slower-moving, but, but that's, that's the only comment I have at this time.
Okay, do any council members?
Yeah, I have a comment. I know that we've been meeting, reference to the truck routes, and we've been meeting reference to the Heber expansion. Do we truly need this ad hoc committee that we can, I know you said that we're setting priorities, and I know that we have like the Heber expansion, and we have obviously the Cordova Park. Do we truly need an ad hoc committee in order for us to go forward? I mean, we, like I said, we're meeting for other events, and, I mean, we can continue with that, we can meet reference to the airport without having the ad hoc committee. That's my two cents on it.
Yeah, this, ad hocs are informal by nature, they won't, there won't be minutes, there will not be an agenda, so if, if this is deemed a priority, and I have not dipped, I haven't dived into the airport study and analysis, we did find, Mr. Coyne found that we did do one in 2001, so. So, that's, that, that's gonna be a, a read for sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Coyne. He finds a lot of things.
What, what did we do in two thousand and one?
He did a-
We have an airport master plan-
Oh.
-that lays out the development of the airport.
Two thousand and one. So, um-
So that kinda proves my point though, that we've had something for two thousand, since two thousand and one that was, that probably cost some money and it's been sitting there for five years. So it's whether, do you, you know, like you said, we don't really need it. But if we have it, we're gonna make sure that something is getting done. If we don't have it, then we're just, you know, relying on whatever time you have available to get to it. And that's, that's the purpose.
No, that's it, thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Tylenda, do you have any comment?
Um, well, if we have a department that has been, um, operating in a deficit for over three years, um, and we wanna change and we're doing a list of priorities, I think this would fall in like top ten, maybe top five. Um, but with that said, I do think that, um, if, if the city manager is recommending that we compose the ad hoc committee after we have our workshop, then maybe we should, um, table it. And, and I do think it's needed, so we should have an ad hoc committee, just like we did in a little ad hoc committee to get a city manager. And until then, did we get a city manager? Um, I think it's important to do the same, especially with a, a failing department. And, uh, that way that we have, um, council members who we know are working on it, instead of just trying to figure out who's working on what. We need to work together and identify, um, what council members could be the best fit for these types of ad hoc committees. Um, so I, I do think that we need an ad hoc committee. Um, and maybe we should wait to compose it until after we have our priorities. But, um, I think that once we do that, I really would expect the airport to be in top five. Um, like I said, it's a leakage, it's a failing department, it's been failing and we need to fix it. So that's what I have to add.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus, nothing to add? Councilmember Calderon?
I am.
Okay, does anybody have a motion?
Um, I motion to table this item to... We didn't set a date for the workshop, right?
The priorities or the, or the capital improvement? Priorities workshop?
Yeah.
I plan to, uh, send out, uh, an email very shortly and, and have Maricela here, uh, organize the, the date for the priorities workshop.
Are you thinking October, November?
Thinking early October.
Okay, um, then I would, um, if you're thinking early October, I'd table this to the second meeting of October.
Yeah.
So, um, what date is that?
That would be the fifteenth.
All right, so I'd table this item to the fifteenth of October.
Okay, I'll second that. Roll call, madam clerk?
Mayor Norikumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Tylenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus? Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number twenty, resolution of the city council, the city of Colexico authorizing the city manager, manager to execute a land lease agreement with Hensel Phelps for temporary use of Border Friendship Park and the East Orthopedic Clinic Parking Lot in support of the construction of the new pedestrian processing facility at the Colexico West Land Port, Port of Entry.
Uh, good evening, uh, madam mayor, members of council. Uh, this item, uh, just to reiterate, is just to authorize the city manager to execute a lease agreement. We are fine tuning the lease agreement with the, uh, the contractor, Hensel Phelps. Uh, Hensel Phelps, so this is to support a very important project for the city. It's for our two hundred million dollar new pedestrian facility. They're, they're looking to move quickly on the teardown of the existing facility and on the construction of the new pedestrian facility. As a reminder, the new facility will double processing capacity. Uh, so this is something that will be important for the city to support in order to try to reinvigorate our downtown and get additional pedestrian, uh, traffic through more efficiently. That said, um, Hensel Phelps, originally they came in with a proposal to lease two adjacent sites of ours, the Orthopedic Clinic Parking Lot and, and the Border Friendship Park. The Border Friendship Park to be used as a laydown yard. And the Orthopedic Clinic for both, a portion for both laydown and parking of their personnel vehicles. Um, originally, they had just proposed a lease agreement to the tune of about two hundred and seventy thousand, um, over a, a three-year term, which is the complete, completion term for the project. Um, and I do have to credit our new public works director for, uh, pushing for this proposal that's here before you tonight, to actually, um, in, in lieu of providing us a lease payment to demo the Orthopedic Clinic, uh, which has been a longstanding ISO. We negotiated with them, um, for this trade-off. And they're, with this proposal, they are, they would demolish the Orthopedic Clinic in exchange for the lease. Um, the lease term, uh, currently it's about forty-three months. Um, all the major terms are laid out. Um, as I mentioned, we are fine tuning the, the lease agreement, but all the major terms, um, have been, um, resolved. And, uh, as such, we recommend that you approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this proposed lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have a comment or a question? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion, motion by Mayor Protem Legaspi, seconded by councilmember Calderon. Roll call, madam clerk?
Mayor Norikumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Tylenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, informational items, receive and file library board of trustees minutes for meeting on July seventh, twenty twenty-five? Are we gonna have, no, nothing? Okay. Um, item number twenty-two, city manager to provide an update on the city's parking meters, projected date of installation and how the city expects to offset the revenue projected for the first quarter of this fiscal year.
Mr. Chief of Police?
Good evening, madam mayor, city council members. Um, so I've provided you a quick report, uh, reference to our status of where we are with the meters. Um, we've done the kickoff, uh, meeting with IPS. Uh, we've met with other meter companies, but based on what was already previously approved by city council, IPS is the only one that's, um, that's met the requirements that was priorly approved. Uh, they're working on finishing the meter order. They're gonna ship out the first batch of meters, about three hundred meters. And they estimate about forty-five days for it to be installed. So they'll have the meters in thirty days. It's, they, they say about two weeks for them to come down and install them. Um, we'll call it, we've already done a lot of the software, that my team has already onboarded as far as the software. Um, right now they're talking with finance for the part where they're going to do the credit card, uh, transactions. So they should be finishing that up pretty soon. Um, once they give us the go-ahead to pick up the meters, we're gonna go pick them up so that way we don't delay it anymore. We're gonna start putting out, uh, signs, letting know to the public that we are gonna unbag within about thirty to forty-five days. And then we have to start changing the signs. So right now, uh, Public Works is looking at quotes to get the, the permanent signs put up, but we have already planned to put temporary signs to kinda help us out to get those up and running to let the public know.
So it's forty-five days?
That's what, I talked to them today to try to kinda push them, push them to go faster. So they have, they're revamping the housing because the new meters are gonna require a different housing than what we have right now. So they're changing a few motherboards on some of the meters to get the order done and repainting the, the meter housing, uh, that goes on top.
Um, can I ask a question to the finance director directly? Um, um, Ms. Chaparro, what was the projection on the parking meters for fiscal year twenty five, twenty-six?
I have it right here. It was, um, four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, and then if we're doing something in forty-five days, that means we would've been five months after. So almost two, two quarters or half of our fiscal year. So, so then say maybe about two fifty. Or how are we gonna, when, how are we going to, um, make up for that on the budget?
So, um, similar to how we did last year when they were stopped, um, when I do the quarterly updates, we do analyze all the revenues and we, that's when we make the adjustments. So last year when they were stopped, um, we did an adjustment, we, we reduced the revenue because we are not anticipating getting that revenue or the full revenue, um, we did the adjustment. So it would be the same way because we're, when I do my first quarter report and the end of year report, which is gonna be like in November, at that point, if there's, you know, we're gonna take into consideration how many months they've been non-operating and we're gonna divide that amount, let's say by twelve months. We, we'll do a calculation and we're gonna do the adjustment right there because we're not, I know we're not gonna get the full amount at this point. So it'll be through the quarterly report.
Can I, can I add something to that, madam mayor?
Yeah.
So one thing that we're doing extra that wasn't accounted for is we had some revenue that wasn't budgeted from the Nicholas Consulting. I, I don't know if you guys recall that you guys approved to use this company to do revenue recovery. So we've gotten two years' worth of revenue coming in that wasn't budgeted for. So what we've decided to do is to get those kiosks to meter the, the parking lots. So that's revenue that was never budgeted before because we've never metered the, the parking lots. So the three parking lots that, obviously we're not doing the fourth one because we're leasing it out to Hensel Phelps. But the other three, we're gonna put kiosks and we're gonna meter them the same type, same way we're metering the actual streets. So that's an additional revenue that we weren't anticipating. They're being paid by revenue that isn't coming out of the budget, so there shouldn't be much of a feel. So I've been working with finance to create a revenue, uh, line item and expenditure to pay for those kiosks.
And when would we get those in?
Those are gonna come in with, about the same time. So.
Okay. Do, does anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Moving on to future agenda items, um, I'm gonna let everybody know how I was able to get my items on the agenda. And it's very simple and I wanna share it with all of the council members. Um, we have to follow the policy. So the policy, in case we don't remember, we adopted a policy in March. This council adopted a, an agenda policy in March. And that, and we, in the minutes, it also says that we said ourselves that that policy would be strictly enforced. So this is, let me tell you how, how all of the council can get an agenda item on the agenda. Oh, let me just go back. The reason why there's this policy and the reason why maybe we're, we're all frustrated or we've been frustrated at, at some point in time, where we say, um, we've been asking for this over and over again and it's not happening and it's not getting done. So the whole purpose of the policy is so that not one council member, or maybe two, um, which is not, so let me rephrase that, that the non-majority of, of any, of the council, um, starts asking staff to do things and then they're investing their time. And then, so when it comes onto the council, um, it turns out that the council doesn't vote to approve it. So then the staff just spent all of that time doing something that wasn't gonna go through. That's the reason why the policy exists. So, the way that you get something on the agenda is, say for example, we want to discuss what, what I said about the zero-based budget. Um, you would do it tonight under future agenda items. And I'm saying exactly what the policy says. So say I wanna get, you know, the zero-based budget on the agenda. So under future agenda items, I say, I wanna get, I wanna talk about a zero-based budget. I want a discussion. And then I'm gonna ask, does any other council member second it? And then if I get a second from Mayor Protem Legaspi, then that, under policy, says that it has to be on the next agenda. But then there's another part to it, that you have to have your staff report in to the city clerk by tomorrow at five P.M. And, and it has to be done by us because that, the whole purpose of the agenda policy is that we don't take up staff time to do something that's probably not gonna pass anyway or not even considered by the rest of the council. But it's very easy because you don't have to do a lengthy staff report and the city clerk can send you the template. All you have to do is say, requested by councilmember Calderon, and then you just put discussion on this. And is there a fiscal impact? No. And then you submit it by the deadline and then we get to discuss it at the next agenda, at the next council meeting. Then when we discuss it and if we have an action and the majority says, yes, we agree, we wanna pursue this, then that's what gives a direction to the staff to invest the time and get to work. So that's the whole point of the policy. That's part of the reason why maybe we've been asking for things to happen and they don't happen because the staff or the city manager, he's listening to you, but he's not listening the three votes, the majority votes. He needs to listen to the majority votes in order to get to work. Because then that means that the council does wanna pursue that. So, um, with that said, do we have any future agenda items? Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes, now for the next council meeting, but for the following one, I don't have a date on me. Uh, Fire Chief Contreras did an excellent job in finding ways of bringing in revenues. I would like you to do the same thing, chief, uh, reference to administrative fees, something that we talked about before. Uh, if you can have that, if you can make that happen or give us a report, not at this council meeting, because I know you, you, you're gonna have to go to El Centro or contact the other agencies to make this, make this happen. Just have it ready for the following council meeting.
So you want an informational meeting from the, from the police chief about how to bring in more revenue? Okay, do I have a, a second on that request?
I second that.
Okay. Seconded by, uh, councilmember Marcus. Um, and it's for the following meeting, so he's got until next week to submit a simple. You can ask your wife, she knows how to do it. Hey, I just realized, you have an advantage.
Well, I wasn't talking about the, uh, can, can you have it in two weeks? All right, all right, have it in two weeks.
Okay, so then by five P.M., you know the next deadline for the next council meeting? It's just an informational item. Um, all right, do you have something else?
No.
Okay, councilmember Tylenda?
Um, so I just want, um, on the next agenda, um, actually, no, sorry. I, I spoke with the city manager about this, but he gave me an information, remind. Um, no, uh, I, uh, might, um, so from what I'm understanding is if we wanna discuss something, we get a second and either have staff if they can do it, if not, we do it? Like just informational and then if it's approved?
If it's just discussion, we would do it.
Okay, if it's just discussion. And then, and then if it's approved, then staff dives into it more, more in depth.
Right. Now staff has direction to do it.
Okay. So, so all the, all the other things that we've asked for in the past, then what, that's just-
We would have to vote on it to give direction. So you need to bring it up for a discussion, so we can have the discussion, act on it. And by voting, then the city manager has to do it. He has to, he's, he has no other, yeah, he has no other, yeah, exactly.
Okay, um, all right. So, no, I, I'm okay, I'm gonna go do my-
Not for now?
Not for, not for the next one.
Not for the next one? Okay, councilmember Marcus?
Yeah, for the next, um, meeting, I would like to bring up Rodriguez Park, cause I know that I've been asking for month after month. I wanna know what the updates are in regards to the restrooms. Uh, we have been waiting for a long time. We were supposed to have a baseball game. One of our community members was putting a baseball game together to have Aguilas of Mexicali come in and play in Rodriguez Park. However, we have no restrooms. And on top of that, I think, um, Legion, is that the one, the one on the water park? The restrooms are disgusting. What is the plan? I, I know that I've asked before in reference to park maintenance schedule. I've asked for a schedule for a downtown cleaning schedule. I have never received one. I don't know if it even exists. And I would like to, also, I know, um, right now when, um, Tylenda, councilmember Tylenda mentioned it, I think it would be a great opportunity for us to test exactly what would happen if we were to open Cordova Park. I know that some of the, um, the questions were brought in regards to turning on the lights. How, how much really is it gonna impact if we have a game going on there? Because I really doubt that we're gonna have three games going at the same time, especially now. So, that's one of the things that I, I feel, you know, talking to Mr. Villegas, it is a good idea to have a trial run and see how much traffic it's gonna create. Because I was there visiting my son and, yesterday. And there was a soccer game going on. And all the parking around there was taken. So, I just don't understand how the south part of that park is so controversial about the parking. However, the north is not. So, you know, it, it kinda raises a lot of questions. So, if, if we already are taking parking in the northern part of that park because there's soccer games going and I was still able to get parking, then why is it that the south part of the park is creating so much controversy? And, you know, maybe that could also help with, you know, what would happen if the lights were on? Like you were posing that question.
Yeah, okay. Just really, these are future, these are future agenda items, they're not discussion, for future agenda items.
Okay, yeah, well.
I was actually gonna get a legal opinion because we just moved on something for the park. So, now, we're going back to the park and trying to open them?
Right now, we're just asking for future agenda items. It's not for discussion or direction, just asking for future agenda items at this point.
So, so just to clarify for the city clerk, what items would you like to see if you get seconded to be on the agenda? I, I was only able to write down, you want informational on the update to Rodriguez Park?
Correct.
And then, so do we have a second on that one? Second, okay. So, we have a second on that one, Madam Clerk, to be on for informational updates on Rodriguez Park. And then, and then I got the schedule for downtown cleaning. And we have a second from Councilmember Thailanda?
And park maintenance.
And then, a, a schedule for park maintenance? Okay, and then she would like to see a, a presentation or a discussion on the schedule? We can do a presentation, right, or informational, what can be done? It, it doesn't take a lot of staff time, right? Okay, schedule for park maintenance?
Councilmember Marcus, can you add in your request to talk about, like, the equipment? Is that what, is that getting encompassed, is your idea, the equipment?
Yes, I second it.
On what equipment, just to be clear, for the?
On the parks' equipment, right? Maintenance on the parks and, yeah.
Okay, so, and then, so we got, okay. Schedule for, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Schedule for park maintenance, so there are three items. Is anybody gonna second the schedule for park maintenance?
I, I second it.
Okay, so then we have these three items, is there more?
Yes, the opening of Cordova Park.
That doesn't go against what we just acted on?
No, because that's, that's our P conceptual plan. This is, I think she's, what I heard is looking to see potentially if.
So, we're gonna have a discussion, so it'll be a discussion? We're gonna have the same amount of people we had here today, I'm just letting you know.
These are few council items.
Everybody that was out here today is gonna be out for that discussion because if you request that we open Cordova Park and then you said it's not ready, right? So, we would have to invest more money to be able to open those fields, correct?
I would say so because there are no bleachers, there, the louts are not done. Some sidewalks are already broken, so there are a few trip hazards. So, my advice would be to not use it as is. And if the direction is to use it, then we have to make an assessment.
We have to invest in it.
And do some investments if, if we want to, to be sure that no accidents will be done.
So, there's already damage to the park?
There are a few damage, yeah, and there are components that are not done, so.
And, and I just wanted to add to that, that it's actually not, like, the infield is not ready because all the dirt that was supposed to fill, that was given to one of the volunteers so that they can use it at Rodriguez Park, at Alex Rivera and at Legion Field for the last season. So, the city would have to purchase dirt. So, there would have to, there would be an investment if, if, if we would have to open that park. So, that's, just so we're clear.
Yeah, and it'll take a little time. I mean, it's not going from one day to the other.
Okay.
Okay, so then, and so now here's the process to follow, is that for these items to be on the next agenda, Councilmember Marcus, is that by 5:00 P.M. tomorrow, you submit a staff report to the city clerk and it just has to be very simple. City clerk, if you can email her the template and then it just pretty much says informational or if, or if you got the, if you, if you wrote down the notes, city clerk, on exactly what's asking. Maybe you can, I don't know, if, if you can do it or let her know how to do one of them or give her a sample and then that way it can be submitted by 5:00 P.M.
So, then at this point, can I, can I request a report in regards to what's going on with Cordova Park? Like, what's broken, what's missing, all of that? I know that we're giving you so much, but I'm, I, I, it just, it doesn't make sense to me that this park has been sitting there for like a whole year and nobody's used it and now it's broken.
Yeah, I, I mean, not, not completely broken. I, I walked the area and not all the sidewalks are in optimal conditions. So, basically, before recommending to use it, I would, I would prefer to do some repairs and complete basic stuff so the, the teams are safe in, in those, in that facility.
And, and the reason I'm asking, it's because there is gonna be a, a league starting soon. And we were, we're gonna be running into the same problems as we did last year. And I'm sorry, I did mention Legion Park, that's the water plant, where the restrooms are unusable. And, and so.
Yeah, no, no, I got the notes, yeah, and yeah, starting tomorrow, we'll, we'll start working on those.
And I mean, my granddaughter plays there and the restrooms, I mean, not two, but little boys, it's easier. Little girls, it's a little bit harder and wouldn't allow her to go in there. And, and there's, and she's not the only one playing, there's plenty of other people playing there as well, or children.
Yeah, yeah, I already got the notes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, like, these staff reports would fall under each department head? Because I don't have the backup to put on the staff report. It, it asks for background and it asks for discussion and analysis and only the department head would be a pro on that.
Going back to the concept of we're not gonna have staff invest time in something that hasn't been approved by the majority, it would have to be something that, that each council member can do briefly. It's just informational. So, the only thing, it was kinda like maybe send her the template and said, and just say for informational purpose. It just needs to be two sentences, pretty much saying, you know, what she said, information on, informational item, no fiscal impact, update on Rodriguez Park, another one. Or, or put them all in one, update on Rodriguez Park, Legion Field and all the parks that she want in that can be in one informational item. And then, Public Works Director knows that's what it is. But that's, that's what the policy says, so I'm just repeating what the policy says. So, it is, it is the council that has to submit these staff reports, even if they're two sentences. But that, that's what needs to happen so that, so that staff time isn't invested in something that hasn't been approved or given direction to.
And then, how will we be getting this there? I, I understand that you want us to go ahead and do this, but then how are we going to be getting the results of this?
The results? It's not that I want you to do it, it's that, that's what policy says. For me, I, I've always been saying like, why, why, why can't you guys just do this? It's really simple, let's have a discussion. But that's what policy says and that's what we voted on. But, like I said, it's just, so, so let me just put this right here. So, all you gotta do is like.
No, no, I, I understand.
Okay, you understand.
My question is, who will be now reporting on those things, ones that's brought forward?
Well, they do, because you assign it. So, like, like the one I asked for informational for parking meters, it says, request city manager to inform the council on the parking meters. And then, he assigned it to the chief, which he can. So, so just give everything to the city manager. And he'll assign it to whoever, I mean, clearly, you know the parks belong to you, but, which, by the way, we have, we only speak to you, right? We, it's like we can't give anybody else an assignment. So, we would say, request that city manager provides information on updates of these parks. And that's it, no fiscal impact, that's all we need to do.
So, my informational item that I?
Your wife knows how to do it, you don't have to worry about it.
Well, I've done it before, but, I, so the chief is gonna do the informational?
Yeah, but you would ask the city manager.
City manager, would you have the chief do the informational item regarding to administrative fees and so forth?
But you still need to do the staff report. Your wife will do it, yeah.
Yeah, I think one, one thing, Mayor and City Council, that will, I think, clarify and help the process is that we create a, a form. It's not a staff report, it's just a form.
Okay, that would, that would be good if you create a form, yeah.
And that way, it just says title and just like you say, two sentences and directing staff to come back.
Yeah, and you, okay, yeah.
And, and some cities actually, actually, some cities, just as a discussion, they, you submit the form for the next meeting, like you're asking. But at that meeting, it's only voted on whether the majority wanna hear it. If they wanna hear it, then we bring back at the next meeting, all the details in the formal report.
And I think that's a better way, but that's not our policy. So, then we have to change our policy.
So, I, I wanna review comprehensively all of our policies and, and I would recommend we do something along that line.
It does need to be reviewed because it's since 2008. And all we did in March was re-adopt the exact same language as in 2008.
And these items, some of them are easier, like getting an update on restrooms, et cetera. It's easy to throw it on the agenda tonight or, you know, and we can get back. But if it's a more complicated item, you really do need it to come back to the next meeting for discussion. If the majority of the council wants to see it, hear from it, then you ask staff, how long will it take to do that? If it's a very complicated item, we might need 90 days to come back, so, but.
So, maybe you should, yeah, let, yeah, I think maybe you should put, to redo the policy at some point.
Yeah, it, it should be, it should, it would help.
Okay, Councilmember Calderon, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I do and this is probably the, probably the fourth time I bring it up. And we brought it up, it was, there was supposed to be follow-up and there was no follow-up on the cannabis industry. I need to know where we're at, where we stand with this because I'm not against cannabis, the cannabis industry, but I am against the fact that they're not paying their dues to the city of Calexico. And in some cases, they don't even have the certification that is required to have these type of businesses. We're endangering our city, our youth and anybody else that's out there. So, it's important. I don't know if I have to go and do an investigation, because I can do an investigation, Chief, but I, I like to hear where we stand and what this council needs to do to keep our community safe.
And I think that I've also asked for the same thing and, and was never presented because I know that there was supposed to be a report and I know that there was supposed to be some action taken into the, the check and balances in regards to cannabis and it was never presented to us.
So, I'm hearing a first and a second on cannabis. Who's gonna do the, so, but what I'm, what is not clear isn't exactly what you're asking. Are you asking just for information or you're asking for a discussion action of something?
What I'm asking is a follow-up, something that we discussed. We knew that we were not in compliance with a lot of these agencies and I wanna know what we've done since and where we, where we stand. I mean, I know for a fact that we still have dispensaries out there selling without any certification. So, we, we're just condoning that someone else, I mean, someone selling, you know, cannabis to our community without certification. We don't even know what they're selling. So, this is beyond, I think, our control, but we need to look into it and put a stop to it if that's the case.
Okay, so, I do have experience with cannabis industry and regulation and so forth in other cities. I haven't dip, I haven't delved into Calexico's status. It's, I think it's an important issue, I, I agree, very important issue. What I'd recommend is we bring back an item for the benefit of staff, myself and, and everybody, the team, that we bring back an item that, that, that provides a history on what ordinance we adopted in the first place, when and why and how, what licenses were provided, what licenses are still valid or, or not valid, what is the status of the businesses and, and what is our understanding of, you know, legal versus illegal businesses out there? Because there's, in every city, unfortunately, you, you tend to find and, and illegal operators tend to exist. And then, lastly, what are we doing about it? What, you know, what, what steps are we taking to, you know, fix the situation? So, that is not something that I don't, I'm looking at the chief, but I don't think we can do that. That's a legal also response as well. I, I think we need more time to do that. It is, it is very important, but I wouldn't wanna bring back just a, a brief report on that. I'm thinking 30 days at least, but I, I don't know, Chief? And, and I'm looking at Michael too, actually, while I.
Yeah, I think that we floated the idea of having an urgency ordinance to adopt a moratorium on any new cannabis businesses while we resolve the issues that we currently have and maybe update our current ordinance.
So, since that's a more technical issue, right? And, and, and I think we've, we all, we all agree that that needs to be addressed. So, can, can, can you provide something as, say, if it takes more time, in 30 days? Can you give us something for the, for the next?
I, I think in, in 30, well, Michael just brought up a good point of something that we, we may consider doing and recommending that the city, city council take action on. But, but, and, and part of the justification to do that would be the analysis in the report that Councilmember Calderon asked about. So, I think, I think within 30 days, we can come up with a report and then writing an urgency ordinance is not very complicated, right? That is not, those are pretty easy. So, so, yeah, I think 30 days, Chief, do you feel comfortable?
I'm willing to do a closed session report to the council. As part, as we're talking about it, it's what's the police department doing about it? So, we're talking about investigations, things like that or what we're doing. So, I think something like that would be more appropriate in a closed session because we're talking about possible investigations, things like that.
Okay.
And I could do that for the next city council, yes.
So, we can have that closed session next meeting and then follow-up within 30 days with a more public and generic report on, on the overall program.
Yeah, and can you include a proposed moratorium? Because I think that that would be very beneficial in a situation as our city finds itself.
Okay, so, city clerk, that's more complicated for us to do, but you already, you know, save a spot on it and then the city manager can do all the, the stuff for the agenda. So, that it, so we're gonna have something on closed session, is what I'm understanding, at the next council meeting? And then, we'll have something in open session in, in?
Thirty days.
Two, 30 days from now, yeah.
Two meetings or?
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Councilmember Calderon?
Yes, I have one more and I had asked for this, the last meeting, on the status of our grants. Where we at with the grants and how many grants have we, we have received or gone after since we implemented?
We can, we can do that for the next meeting, so, again.
An informational item?
Yes, but I, again, is. An informa, yes, but I, again, is, to put it on the agenda, like you say, there has to be a second, and then-
Yeah, is there a second for informational on, on grant status?
I would second that.
Okay, so you've got two, and then, so we've got five until 5:00 P.M. tomorrow to submit just an, a, a, a brief informational, um-
Some of these really are just one sentence, so it's not hard for-
They're literally one sentence, like, like just what you said.
But the city clerk could even write that one sentence and just run it by the council member-
Yeah.
And have them sign off on it.
Yeah, I think these things that are easy, I mean, maybe, yeah, if, if, maybe a city clerk can, can give direction, maybe the carlet will help us out, or, or if the council member can send it via email, and then you can just cut and paste.
While we, uh, eventually update the policy.
Until we, yeah, until we change our policy, okay. I have nothing, you have a lot of work to do, so I'm not going to add more to it. So I have nothing on future agenda items. Um, so with nothing else, we're going to resume to closed session.
Um, I was going to motion to table the items on closed session for the next meeting?
Okay, do I have a second?
All right, I was, I'm going to second it.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Are we, so, yeah?
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Please, yes.
Councilmember Marquez? Council, Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
And then just really quick, since we're not pretty convenient, you want to, uh, for the record that we have no reportable actions from our previous discussion in closed session.
Okay. Do you have motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 10:42 P.M.